Good morning. Welcome to our Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for January 27th. So I'd like to stand for pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the Act of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. I'd like to report out on a closed session we had on, held on January 13th, 2015. It's a public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, county administrative officer, on a motion by Supervisor Ponte and a second by Supervisor Kearney. The board voted unanimously to appoint Shirley Ryan as county administrative officer, effective January 24th, 2015, and directed staff to bring a resolution back at the next board meeting to memorialize it. Another report out, closed section held on January 16th, 2015, employee, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, Public Works Director, no action was taken. So we're to recognition and acknowledgements. And so we'd like to recognize February 9th through February 14th as Kindness Week in Calaveras County. Is anybody here to speak on? Come on up.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your recognition and acknowledgement of Kindness Week. My name is Mike Gaseford. The Random Acts of Kindness Committee has sent me to address you this morning and to simply thank you as the Board of Supervisors for that recognition. Random Acts of Kindness in Calaveras County has had its roots as far back as 1995 when the City of Angels Council declared City of Angels a kindness zone, the first of its kind in the United States. Subsequent to that, over the course of all these years, we've managed to distribute, and again this year, 10,000 ribbons annually to our schools, the government center, the hospital, 10,000 ribbons in a county our size is significant. So coupled with, I think this year, 15,000 feet of blue ribbon. Everybody's familiar with the yellow ribbon idea. Well, the blue ribbon is just a reminder that a smile goes a long way. A random act of kindness, something that we can be intentional about, can actually change the culture in Calaveras County. Kindness melts differences among us. We live in a harsh world, so kindness is cost-free. And I'm sure as the Board of Supervisors you're interested in that. So this is what it looks like in Angels Camp. You've seen the sign. We've given the county a couple of signs to put at the entrances to the county. Now, this is a fairly new board. You may not be aware of it, but those signs have not been implemented. So with the signs that are already here, we'd like to see those at the entrance to the county. And I've also brought with me your portion of the 10,000 ribbons. So we'd like to see those at every department, at the county level, the sheriff's office, anywhere that we can simply spread Random Acts of Kindness. So thank you. Thank you this morning.
So does anybody on board have any comments on this? Anybody from the public?
Way to go, Calaveras.
As the gentleman said, I'm George Frye. As the gentleman said, City Council took this up in 1995. And we owe a great thanks to Jim Bergans because he's the one that initiated this entire program. And it's been very, very successful year in and year out.
Great opportunity for a little publicity for the airport. Mike Taylor from the Enterprise and I go out in my little airplane and do those picture shots of all the schools where they make little faces and different things for Kindness Week. And we'll be doing that again this year.
Proclamation recognizing February 9th through 14th, 2015, National Random Acts of Kindness Week. Whereas National Random Acts of Kindness Week will be observed from February 9th through 14th, 2015. And whereas Calaveras County participated in Random Acts of Kindness Week in 2010, 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2014. And whereas all who live and/or work within Calaveras County are encouraged to practice Random Acts of Kindness and a tradition started in Angels Camp by the Jim Bergans family. And now therefore it would be resolved that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors designate the week of 9th through 14th, 2015 to be Kindness Week throughout the county. I'd like to have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. So I have a motion by Supervisor Ponte, saying by Supervisor Wright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. It's five zero. And be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors declares that the county of Calaveras be deemed the Random Acts of Kindness Zone during the week of February 9th and continue from that day through the year 2015. And it's a five zero. Look, you have a bunch of kind supervisors this year, huh? So thank you very much for your contribution. Thank you, and thank you for your resolutions.
Chair, could you have Mr. Gaseford explain what the process for the ribbons are? Some people might not know what that is.
The, the blue ribbons that have been passed out to you state that this is a random act of kindness. Now, you can see that I have a ribbon. And if I experience a random act of kindness in my daily walk, I would then take my ribbon off, I would sign it, and then I would pass it on to the person who perpetrated this great act of kindness. And the idea is that we can create ripples of kindness that have no end. So there you have it. Is that what you were referring to?
Thank you.
Yes. Great. Thank you.
So you realize, of course, if we all did that, there'd be not enough ribbons left in Calaveras County, right?
Well, I think that we have more ribbons. That's not the problem. Yeah, thank you.
So do I understand that once I pass my ribbon to someone, I sign it, pass it off, that they will then do the same thing and add their name to the ribbon? And pretty soon you could have a whole bunch of names on one ribbon. So that's pretty exciting. And I just wondering, in the interest of actually putting one foot in front of the other, can we decide that by a certain date we'll have our signs up and where they'll be? Just a hint, just a thought.
We did post a sign last year. We're super loyal. We had one at the front of the government center. Yes, we can have it posted. And we can have one in the administrative office.
Can I donate another?
I remember it used to be up there.
Yeah.
But I think the court used to be in there.
We'll make sure that one doesn't install. There we go. Yeah. All right, so we have, thank you, sir. We have one more recognition. Robert Campana.
He's not here. It's going to be presented to him at an awards.
Okay. So this is a proclamation honoring Robert Bob Campana for his leadership and inspiration in support of the Mark Twain Medical Center and healthcare programs and services in Calaveras County. Whereas Bob Campana has for over 33 years been actively involved in the direct promotion of expanding healthcare to the communities of Calaveras County. And whereas Bob Campana has demonstrated extraordinary business acumen and expertise that has resulted in Mark Twain Medical Center that has grown to serve the entire community. And whereas Bob Campana has shown himself to be a visionary regarding the future of rural hospitals, and he has forged a unique financial model that has not been duplicated in California. And whereas Bob Campana has provided the leadership and direction to ensure that Mark Twain Medical Center and its services are effectively meeting its mission to improve the health of the community. And whereas Bob Campana has shown himself to be a caring and thoughtful person who has dedicated much of his life to make sure that his community is provided healthcare. Now therefore it would be resolved that the Board of Supervisors, Calaveras County, honors Robert Bob Campana for his extraordinary leadership, inspiration, and dedication to Calaveras County, as exemplified in his longstanding commitment and participation in the Mark Twain Healthcare District. Now, can I have a motion on this, please? Oops, I'm sorry. Public comments on this?
George Frye again. I've known Bob probably for about 35 years. And Bob is on the Mark Twain Healthcare District Board of Directors, not to be confused with Mark Twain Medical Center. They are two separate entities. And Healthcare District belongs to the taxpayers of Calaveras County. It's a countywide healthcare district. So that's the reason why all of the folks get to vote who are registered voters. The, all of the taxpayers, all of us taxpayers, own the hospital buildings and the grounds therein. And it's the responsibility of that Board of Directors to see that the taxpayer's investment is carefully taken care of. Bob did a unique thing that not many people know. Many years ago, when they developed a contract with St. Joseph, he put in that contract, in that lease agreement, that 50% of the money that is taken in, it goes onto the ledger of the Mark Twain Healthcare District. And the other portion obviously goes to Dignity Healthcare and the corporate board here in town, Mark Twain Healthcare, Mark Twain Medical Center. The only reason why I know all of this is I've spent the last three years on a monthly basis, over three years now, attending the monthly meetings. There will be one again tomorrow morning at 7:30 a.m. And so I've really familiarized myself with what goes on with the Healthcare District. And it's my goal in life not to be demeaning, but to educate the voters that they are two separate entities and that there is a contractual agreement from the Healthcare District with Dignity Healthcare and Mark Twain Medical Center. So I share that with you so that you have some background. And Bob's just been really outstanding. Obviously, he's retiring after 33 years. And he will be acknowledged on, in February at the Golden Health Awards Dinner. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Any board comments? Can I have a motion, please? Second. There are two motions still standing. Okay, so Mike Oliver, motion, and Steve Kearney, Supervisor Kearney, second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. So it's five zero, favor. So this is passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of Calaveras County, State of California, this 27th day of January, 2014. So if you're listening, Bob, thank you very much for all you've done for our, our communities in Calaveras. Okay, so we'll go to our public comments, period. And there'll be five minutes of public comments for you, Bonnie, okay? I'm sorry, I have to read this before we do that, okay? So any item of interest in the public that has, that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30 minutes allotted time period, the board may immediately remove the consent agenda, or move to the consent agenda. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued at the conclusion of the regular agenda in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. So we have 30 minutes, five minutes per comment. Sir?
Good morning. I would like Mike Preston, Hathaway Pines.
Thank you.
I would like to congratulate the new members of the board and supervisors and hope that the combined wisdom of the board will help guide us through these difficult times and issues. As everyone is well aware, we are in the worst drought since 1895 with no relief in sight. Many years ago, the head of the Department of Water Resources was interviewed on PBS Channel 6, in which he stated that it was intentionally decided many years ago that the state would not properly plan for water slash growth, so that the growth issue would be one of logistics and not of politics. Unfortunately, this poorly thought-out policy has produced drastic results for California and its citizens. As the population of the state continues to grow, 62% since 1980, more and more political pressure will be brought to bear to separate us from our water rights with the larger populations having the most political power, control, and influence. Most proposed water projects have been stopped by litigation for political, environmental reasons and were not based on sound scientific reasoning. The Metropolitan Water District, the largest district in western United serving Los Angeles and San Diego, over the years has proposed 17 storage projects and was hit with litigation 19 times. Do you wonder why they are so desperate for our water? I'm here today to urge you to support and endorse the recent legislation introduced by our Assembly Member Frank Bigelow in AB 142. I respect and respect the Board of Supervisors, where we visit the wild and scenic issue and join forces with CCWD, Amador Board of Supervisors, Tuolumne Board of Supervisors, and the Amador Water Agency by sending a message that they will not take our water now or in the future. What the legislature tried to do last year with our water was wrong. Assembly Bigelow, Assemblyman Bigelow is trying to protect us, and I urge you to support his legislation to protect not only Calaveras County, but our neighbors to the north and south. I urge you, I urge you to take action to send the message that we are united with our neighbors and will fight to keep our water. Please reverse the former board decision on this issue.
Good morning, Board. Dennis Wells, Director, CCWD. I've been spending the last four months even before I got elected, dealing with the various agencies along the Highway 4 corridor in an attempt to gain some common ground, to open up discussions and to begin to find where are our advantages and where are our disadvantages amongst the various agencies. And each one of us in those agencies are tasked with the responsibility, I think economically more than anything, to keep this water and to keep the wastewater that we treat here in the county and keep it as a viable opportunity for this county going forward. So I've asked each agency to come together, and we've already through CCWD formed an ad hoc committee called the Highway 4 Corridor Committee for the purpose of doing exactly that. I have no intention to be a lead agency here. It's just simply, let's open up the communication lines between the organizations. And as I talk to them, I know to some degree where their challenges are and what they can bring to the table. And I've got UWPA to speak to yet tonight over this issue, but I've already spoken with them at length previous to this. So I'm asking if the board would, would bring at least one member to the table and offer an opportunity for the county's input into the decision-making process as it goes forward. It may become a JPA in the future, I'm not sure where it will go. But I at least would like to begin this communication amongst these various agencies and to include the county board in that decision. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Board. Since we have new blood, I'm here to introduce you to the idea of the IHSS Program in Home Supportive Services, which is a county-based funding, county-based program which provides personal care services, housekeeping, and accompaniment services to the blind, the elderly, and disabled in our county who qualify by qualifying for Medicare, which I believe is an income of $935 or less a month. In our, in our county, we have almost 300 consumers of IHSS. We have almost 275 providers of care for those consumers. The cost runs about $3 million a year. That's about 300,000 hours that are provided to 300 consumers in Calaveras County. It rounds out about, I believe, about 80 hours a month on an average. These folks have, they're not living in luxury, they're not getting services that are very readily obtained. But it is kind of discouraging because once a consumer reaches the age of 55, although a consumer qualifies for the services, you can have a house and a car, but all the services you acquire after the age of 55 become a lien against any property that you have. And of course, you really don't have much if you have a house and a car, and if you have an income less than $935 a month. There is a share of cost if you have a higher income, but that requires the client to pay that difference before they qualify for the county allocated services. In our county, about two-thirds of the clients are younger than 65. Also, about two-thirds of our clients are cared for by family members in their homes. This isn't a lucrative profession. Most people find themselves caring for a family member not by choice, but by the desire to assist and keep a family member out of the facility. It often means giving up a career to care for your wife or husband. You give up a lot of your abilities to move around when you begin caring for somebody full-time. Sometimes you give up your social life. Sometimes you give up your own health, caring for your loved one. Most care providers work well beyond the hours they're allocated. Maximum hours in California is nine hours a day. That's the maximum any one person can be paid for caring, perhaps a person that wanders 24 hours a day and requires 24-hour supervision of some kind. We see oftentimes our providers becoming their own clients or dying on the job. I've met two home care providers in Calaveras County that are over the age of 90, caring for a family member, been doing it for years, a daughter and a wife. Well, he's, she passed, so, but I've known two care providers that are extremely elderly, perhaps in need of assistance themselves, but caring for a loved one and sacrificing a great deal of their health and community for that. In Calaveras County, we have had issues that I won't have time to talk to you about today, but we became unionized in 2003, I'm sorry, 2005, and obtained, and obtained two contracts to date. We have not had a raise or a change in our contract since 2009. And more next time.
Joe Kelly. Thank you, Mr. Preston and Mr. Mills, on the water subject. Thank you, Bonnie, for the healthcare insurance info. By the way, I've seen that healthcare privately done, runs $12,000 a month as a standard. It's very expensive. Has the board, at the last meeting I attended, I also asked about water issue. Has the board made contact with CCWD and other water agencies for a water forum agenda to be held, or are you going to let it slide like the last boards have done? Now, I want to get into this subject a little more. We have something called a balloon, well, we have a balloon that's called government. It does, it's just a big balloon. Sometimes it gets a bump in it. Well, I woke up one morning and go, you know, something's wrong with this general plan concept. We have everything else telling us how to run our lives and what to do with our property and who's going to guide us and steal our properties. I take offense to it. So what I want to see is, I think personally, I believe we need to have a full understanding of government, what this county government entails, and how you presume or effectively plan for its expansion, because that's what happens every year, one way or another. Yes, right now, we're at a low, we have low, low personnel, we have low services, we have high cost of services. We need to know how it's going to become a sustainable agency called county government, how you're going to plan for these SEI, or not SEI, use these union wage increases caused by adopted contracts that you folks sign on to after negotiating, which, by the way, we have no understanding of while you're negotiating it, which I believe is a severe violation of the Brown Act, 54950, the very first paragraph. We are a sovereign people. We hire you to be our employees and to provide us with the information necessary so that we know how to go about our daily lives and know what to expect coming down the pike. Instead of all this, every two weeks, we get something new to look at. Instead of all this, every two weeks, we get something new to look at and review and things continue to go up. You're going to have very, excuse me, very high escalating cost of employment before long. The people just received a 4% raise, I believe it was. I was told, well, yeah, but our costs were 6%. Well, you know, that's a tough life. Mine was what, 1.4, 1.7? I don't remember. It wasn't even worth talking about. So, something needs to be worked out. We all know the Calpers is a dying on the vine situation. It's got a lot of problems and the government says everything, the state government says everything is fine, and it's not. If we fall for that malarkey, we're a bunch of morons, me included, and I don't fall for it. So, I would like to ask you, I ask you to bring forward an issue of this sustainable county government, to put it on the agenda, and before we get into the issue of the general plan going on, because we need to have an understanding of this government. We can't go on. We saw this thing last year, 8-point-something-million-dollar deficit. We can't do it. If you want, if you want to go around and have smiles on your faces and greet your constituents and everything, then get serious with it. Tell us what's going on, let us know. We have all kinds of things coming up in this agenda packet that's money, money, money. How the hell are we, the citizens, going to pay for it? We aren't getting any big raises. So what does it do then? If, depending upon what kind of housing the folks that work here live in, they might be wind up having to pay a lot more, because I'm sure there's going to be a lot more foreclosures going on from what I'm hearing in the real estate business, in the monetary situation. Derivatives are back. The same thing that killed us the last time and will kill us again. So do something about government, folks. Tell us about this bubble and how it might expand as a big bubble or even if in a small notch or bump out in it on a temporary basis. We all need to know and as one sovereign citizen, I demand it. Thank you.
I thought since it was kindness week, I'm going to keep my mouth shut and just sit there and make everybody happy. But on the other hand, there's a couple of issues came up that I'd like to add to it. One of them that we've been, CCWD and the Board of Supervisors, somebody better work it out since this body created CCWD classification as speaking behalf of the whole county. Now, it doesn't work out too good and, well, it was before you folks, most of you folks time, there was a question of Tolome County watershed and it was pushed as a, well, we're going to take care of your water rights. As a Board of Supervisors, took property tax money of $13,000. CCWD, also custodian of property tax, put $13,000 and even poor Murphy's Bill spent almost $800, give it to the water district of Tolome County. Well, I don't know how much you guys know about Tolome County Water District is less popular than the CCWD was in the whole county. But to coordinate how to get grants. But you know what ticked me off? There's our so-called nonprofit stakeholders had a seat for $100. Something's wrong here, folks. That was to me a selling out your constituents to give nonprofit stakeholders, and we're going to get into it later as time goes on. Who are the nonprofit stakeholders? You know what we got out of it? That's exactly it. Not a damn thing. That anybody either the Board of Supervisors, and I'm not taking it as most of you, okay, that was before you've done, that they ever disclosed what was the conditions to be considered for the grant? It took a lot of digging, but I think it was a gentleman someplace, Tim Buntow, that will determine who and how much grant they might be considered for. Folks, you know who got screwed over this deal? The folks behind me, because they were sold, oh, we're going to take care of your water rights. Take a look at how Tolome County Water Rights worked out for them this last year during the drought. Learn from other people's mistake. That's one of the things. The other thing is that I would like to mention is that I sent out a couple of emails to folks because as something struck me about $18 million in education or something. A young lady, Sheri Rasch, called me and explained to me what it was. And she satisfied my curiosity very adequately, because to me, when it's $18 million and they can put you in a property tax role, you know, there's not enough Vaseline for you to take that stuff. Okay, putting it bluntly. But it was explained to me. So I'm going to thank her and I'm going to reassure whoever got kind of upset, because I had a few phone calls and emails, that is being handled adequately. It was too complicated. Her explanation was very complicated to me. But I would very much consider it because, folks, we could be spending or wasting a whole bunch of money for this water issue to many people. And I also would like you to consider that since it's kindness week, considering maybe when you have a time, and I want to compliment you because this agenda is almost reasonable. I'm sure everybody was able to get the grip of it. None of these eight, 900 pages, I mean, I know you're all geniuses, but I bet none, how many of you read all eight, 900 pages? Okay? But it's almost reasonable, folks. It's very nice. I want to compliment whoever's in charge of that stuff. Thank you. So, thank you very much.
Ann Segala, Taxpayer Association. Several items. First one is, welcome Shirley. You're now a permanent fixture and the county is really blessed, the taxpayers are really blessed with you because we know you well and you do good work and you protect our money and you're organized and you're open, which means that we have sunshine. These are all good things. Also compliments to Diane Severoy for the work she did responding to the Board of Supervisors requesting an analysis of the committees and commissions that seem to be languishing. I understand there's been four years before there was, there've been no reports filed and they have difficulty or are not able to get a quorum. So it's these functions of government that are, when not cleaned up, are stained, not just on the administrative staff, but also on the Board of Supervisors, because you should be aware of what's happening with these boards and commissions. There's no excuse to go four years without an annual report. And so, the fact that now, this last meeting, you got an analysis of what's happening with these boards and it's not something to kick down the road for three months or six months or turn your back on, is take action at the board, if the commission or group that is not functioning, end it. And then if something would need to be reformed later, let it be reformed in a more sound basis. Maybe not under the Brown Act regulations, maybe in a more informal type of group. But in any case, I think you agree, the responsible thing is not to turn your back on it, but to take action on all four of those items. The Taxpayer Association hosts a public access TV program called Taxpayer Alert and sometimes we do a good job. And apparently this last taping, the first one was with John Adams, who talked about his group and how they help people in the case of, or suggestions on what to do in the case of catastrophe where you might not have food or electricity or such things as that. It was a very good program, so, you know, a fine man. We don't agree politically, but we certainly agree on communication type things. And the other one is, half our program was our planning director. And he talked about some things that are usually not talked about here and is very, very open and positive. And also he talked about the progress with FEMA. FEMA flood insurance has been a real, real pain to property owners in this county and also concern to the Board of Supervisors before. And now, one suggestion that you might consider is to, since you are involved in trying to make our government better and get rid of things that are not functioning properly, one way might be to have, besides a suggestion box for employees, if you don't have that already, you should, and the next one is to have feedback for everybody you deal with. Consider applicants for whatever they apply for as customers, as customers. In other words, you're to serve your customers. They're not here to be commanded. They're here to be served and so you want to know what their experiences are with our government. So every time somebody goes to the planning commission or our planning department or anything that they have in application where they're required to get approval, get feedback afterwards. You can do it, there's several ways you can do it. I'm sure you can figure out how to do it. And so you'll be constantly monitoring what's happening with the public. You don't want to be surprised by people that are angry with you, but they don't say anything because they're afraid of City Hall and afraid of retribution or whatever. You don't want those kind of conditions going on, which has happened. So if you would consider feedback from employees and feedback from your customers, I think we're off to a great start. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. All right, any other public comments?
George Frye. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board for unanimously voting to select Shirley Ryan to be county administrative officer. Several weeks ago, I said to somebody in the community, I hope that the Board will see fit to appoint Shirley as the new county administrative officer. She has a historical perspective. She has buy-in to the community and the county at large. She's extremely knowledgeable and she's very fiscally conservative. And besides that, she's from my home state of Massachusetts. Next, I would like to encourage, I know that the Board met and closed session last Friday, to interview possible candidates for Director of Public Works. I don't know who's applied, it's not my business, but I hope that Robert applied and that I hope that you have given him good credence. He has a historical perspective. He's been working in public works for over 20 years as the interim Public Works Director. He comes before this Board and he knows his stuff. He presents his stuff to the Board and all indications that I have observed is that the Board is very appreciative of his background and knowledge. And so I would encourage you to once again, look amongst our folks who have lived here and who have served here and make a whole lot less money than they could somewhere else because they're dedicated to what they do here. So I ask you to do that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda items are expected to be routine, erratically, and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Do I have anybody who wishes to remove an item?
Number 10.
Number 10 for Supervisor Collier. Any others? Any member of the public wish to remove an item?
Number 8.
Number 8?
Number 9.
Number 9?
I'll join Peter on 9 and add 5 and 6 please. Mr. Edison, thank you for the last five minutes of the conference.
Thank Bonnie. She told me to.
Well, I'm glad she wheels a heavy hammer again.
You all do. Anybody else from the public wishing to remove an item?
Yeah, I'm with the other two gentlemen with number 9.
Okay.
Is he a soft-hearted gentleman?
So on the remainder of consent and gentlemen, do I have motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Motion by Supervisor Ponte and second by Supervisor Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So it's 5-0 in favor and so we'll start with Mr. Kelly on number 5.
Joe Kelly, this is a resolution of the Board, basically on the bond issue of the school district. I'm very concerned about this, although it took place a few years ago and it's now coming for issuance of additional monies. Not remembering what it was all about in the past, but having seen some of the turmoil that's been going on now, is I asked for what use? Is the tax levy amount available at this time? In other words, what the auditor controller is supposed to be working up for the levy? And what are the consequences if purposes change and to who suffer the consequences? This is all based on information that's in this document to be the bond and in particular under one of the whereasses, the bonds are authorized to be issued by the district for the purposes, purposes set forth in the ballot submitted to the voters of the election. As we have seen at the state issue with the choo-choo train or high-speed rail, whatever you want to call that debacle, it has changed from what it was presented to the voters as. So I just want to be sure that there's going to be consequences if the school district in midstream of, once they obtain the funds, are then subject to some sort of accountability and responsibility with consequences. The auditor controller will be working to levy, add below on taxes in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds when due. Now, this is all fine, except if we still continue to have foreclosures, who's paying those levied fees on foreclosed properties? Or does it come about when the bank finally sells the property that the new owner gets stuck for the past bills? And this is on all taxable property in the county. And that, one other last thing, was the auditor controller is further authorized and directed to maintain on its tax rule and all subsequent tax rules, taxes in an amount sufficient to fulfill the requirements of the debt service scheduled for the bonds. So, because government, as we see at the state level, is somewhat untrustworthy, I hope that we'll be able to trust the school district to do what they've said in the past and actually made a promise by getting an approval of a bond issue. If not, then something's severely wrong. Thank you.
Any other comments on number 5? From the public? From the supervisors?
This was a bond that was passed by the voters of the district a number of years ago and they're now going out to sell the bonds. And it usually spelled out very clearly within the bond what the funds can be used for and based on what was included in that, they can only be used as outlined and voted on by the voters. As far as calculating the amount that is for debt service repayment, basically, and this is a very basic breakdown, is when the assessor closes the tax rolls and we know what the tax valuation is, it's then divided by what the debt service payment is to come up with the up with the amount per thousand or hundred thousand that a homeowner has to pay. When a house goes into foreclosure, the person that holds the title of the bank or the mortgage company usually continues to make those property tax and any assessments on that bill until the house is either resold or kept by the bank.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Supervisor Wright makes a motion to approve, second by Supervisor Ponti. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's 5-0. Okay, number 6, Mr. Kelly. It's adopt a resolution appointing, I already know what you're going to do here.
You do?
Yeah. Appointing Shirley E. Ryan County Administrative Officer effective July 24, 2015.
Lead me in?
Go for it.
Well, you're not expecting this. How many people showed up for this hearing you had, for, you know, public, or not a public hearing, but your closed session for an appointment of? How many people? What were their backgrounds? Where'd they come from? I think we need to start understanding this a little more in our government as it goes along, so we can have a little better understanding of our government. Now, coming to Ms. Ryan. God bless you, lady. You have my, what can I say? Appreciation forever. Last year, when you told the then-Board, "I feel compelled to have to advise you folks, we don't have enough money." You're the only person that's ever sat, either as an interim, or as a CAO that I can recall, that has brought that to my attention, that put the Board in place to understand the financial difficulties this county has had. I applaud you and thank you. And I hope you stay longer than three years in the position. That's my only concern. Thank you, though.
I have to say that I heard these words also from former CAO Lori Norton. But I understand your position where you have to be delicate when you put this information out there. But I also want to caution our Board, as all Boards, that you are the fiscal memory on this Board, and that we need to pay attention and follow your guidance, because you are the authority on the money issues in this county, and you know where every penny is. And so, for us to say, "Well, we know better," you know, has gotten us where we are today. And I applaud Marita Callaway as well, for trying to get the word out and bring other Board members along to, because she was on the Board, the only fiscal memory that we had. And she is no longer here. So anyway, we just need to remember that we hired you because you're good, and you're the expert. So let's recognize that. So thank you. Thank you.
It's kind of strict, ma'am.
Oh, my God.
I'm glad this Board.
Hold on, Peter.
I'm holding it.
Oh, my God.
Oh, baby. Oh, God, you made my day.
Oh, my God, Mom.
Hopefully, that the Board continues by this idea. I'm personally getting tired of just getting this card, but beggars going through this revolving door in this county. That's getting ridiculous. I don't know who sets, who hires these people. I mean, they come in, and it's not fair to prior hired people. They're here for six, seven months, reality checks in, and they boogie out of here, okay? That's not really fair to them, and it's definitely not fair to us. I don't know who's your source of employers that they're going to put front of you, and it's not just here, it's CCWD folks. But thank you for getting more and more local folks who are going to be, know the county, who gets the benefit and the cost of living in this county. And hopefully, that we can get people that tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, even if it's behind a closed door, and inform people all the facts, not just the propaganda. And I'm looking forward to it, at least she had what it takes to, I know when you get up there, you're God's, okay? But listen to these folks, they live here, and it's not just her, there's somebody back there sitting up there on Public Works. They are more of a victim because they have a decision to make, job security, and cost of their job security. There's so many half-truth statistics being put out, and hopefully, you have some people with some idea of what numbers are. And if you can't tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, you don't want to do it. You know, there's always going to be some A person. I was going to say something else, but I'm going to give you a hard time. And if you cannot tell exactly what it is, I don't care if it's a grant, or loan, whatever, don't do it, folks. It's going to catch up to you, make you look very silly, and that's another supervisor is going to spend $30,000 campaigning, sitting home on the butt, watching this. So, it's going to catch up to you sooner or later, like CSA 1. It's not forgotten, it's not forgiven, and it's going to come one way or another. Thank you, folks. And thank you. And don't get too mad in the future, please.
I know some of the folks here at the Board Unit, I'm at a loss for words here, which is unusual for me. But I just, what I want to share with you, and I specifically want to share with the two new Supervisors, is something that I've shared in the past. As a young teenager at age 14, I listened to and watched John F. Kennedy's inaugural address on January 20, 1961. I'm still a young man. But anyway, in that address, which is very famous even to this day, he said, "My fellow Americans, ask not what your country can do for you, but what can you do for your country?" I say that in all sincerity, because it left a lasting impression upon me. And that's part of the reason why I come to these Board meetings. I mean, I could be doing other things, but I don't think it's a waste of time for me to come here. I think it helps me understand what people are thinking, what they're doing, and how they're acting. And we all are in this boat together. Your constituents, I, and everyone else who voted, we voted for you folks to help all of us have a better life here in Calaveras County. And the only way we're going to do that is not to be critical of one another, but to be, and not to be defensive on either side, whether it's there or out here, together. And to, well, I'll just put it right out there. I'm very Irish-looking. My mom is Irish, Boston Irish. My dad is Cherokee Indian. I got my mom's Irish. I have two brothers who look just like Cherokee Indians. Herr, number one, and is black. But my dad always told us as kids growing up, "Don't criticize the Native American until you've walked in his shoes a mile." I share that with everybody, because I think we need to take a step back and all work together. I've always felt that way in every community I've ever lived in. I've given back, because I've taken from that community in some way, shape, or form, and we all have. And so, I'm asking for us all to work together in this year of 2015 and beyond. Thank you.
Any other comments on item number 6?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution appointing Shirley E. Ryan County Administrative Officer effective January 24, 2015.
Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Ponti?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So done. So maybe Shirley would like to say something?
I would. Thank you for all the kind words to the Board. Thank you for your support and confidence in me and appointing me as the new CAO. I look forward to working with this Board, with the Department Heads and the new employees. And I actually said, when it was asked of me yesterday, nobody succeeds as a CAO by themselves. It really is a team effort. It takes the Board with their leadership and their vision in setting policy, it takes the Department Heads, it takes the employees that are in the trenches day-to-day, working hard to move forward, and it takes the public, our community. We have to work as a team, and that's the only way we're going to continue to grow. But I'm very appreciative of the Board's support and confidence, and look forward moving forward. Thank you.
So now we have a CAO, that's great, huh? Bonnie? Adopt a resolution in support of authorization and funding of a federal payment in lieu of taxes, PLT program.
What is that? It just sounds so interesting. Payment in lieu of taxes? Could somebody explain that real quickly? Because I don't have a computer, I don't look it up beforehand, but that caught my eye. It sounds like it's something I'd be in support of somehow. I don't know.
Very briefly, payment in lieu of taxes is a program that allows any lands in local jurisdictions, federal property, is not subject to property taxes. And so, a program was instituted by the federal government to basically make whole counties and taxing agencies to make up for that loss of property tax.
Like all federal money, though. Chair? I think we need to ask to come to the podium, so folks on CCTV can hear this.
Okay.
Can't hear from the audience, in other words, for questions.
So why don't you come and come forward and ask that question again, Bonnie, sorry.
So we may be talking about all the federal land up the hill that's federal, forest, the forest.
Thank you. I can understand her question, okay? But a lot of these things save you time and create less misunderstanding and suspicion. Is that possible? I'm directing, well, to the Chair, she can answer it. Print one of those, the one you get downloaded from a computer on a website? I mean, print an extra one up and put it outside. Because these folks don't realize it, they read the headlines, but usually, the juicy stuff is down at the one-third of those little things that you guys watch. That's where the funny stuff comes in, you know? That's from my experiences. Headlines are beautiful, rah rah rah, save the world. But the cost, who and how, the money's made, and so on, it comes usually at the one-third to the bottom. And if the public would have just printed one extra of the items that you, you know, what's in there, and put it outside, have somebody, because most people come down for one issue or the other. Not everybody's sick like me and read the whole thing. But come in one issue or another, they would have an opportunity, if they don't have a chance to load it down on a computer. Have an extra copy, let it sit out there, and if somebody is just in a particular item, let them read the whole packet, the good, the bad, and ugly, not just the headlines. Consider it. Please, thank you.
You're asking for, just so, before you walk away, a full hard copy of the agenda is what you're asking?
No, these today's, what, 400, 500 pages, not 800, 900 pages? Just make a copy of it, put it out there. That would be fair to the constituent, because these people in here obviously read the headlines. They don't know the details. Thank you.
Chair, if I could address that. Our agenda packet is always available in the administrative office as it states on our agenda. The agenda packets supporting documentation are available for public review in the administrative office during regular business hours. Always has that.
Okay. During the meeting, put one up, because I'm asking.
It's available there right now, and it's available on the lot party.
And I apologize for not utilizing that, but you know what? I think sometimes my questions help the public, maybe the people watching TV understand what we're talking about, because they don't have access to that, nor I. And my questions are usually pretty simple, like, "What's it about?", you know, nothing technical, but, so I don't think we should be chastised for not looking it up beforehand. Thank you.
Okay.
My presumption with Peter is, is that he would like to see the hard copy that's in the administrative office brought over here prior to the Board meeting, so that people who don't have computers can come here at 8:30 and look through the packet. And I think that's a reasonable request.
Actually, we don't print out a hard copy of the packet. We have a device, an iPad, or it's actually, I think it's an Android, but at the administrative office, that anybody who's welcome to command during regular business hours, we open at 8 o'clock, they can come in prior to the Board meeting and look up any agenda item that they wish.
What kind of device is it?
It's like a pad.
It's a tablet. And I'm also here usually at least 30 minutes prior to the meeting, and I have it available right now.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor the point, I just think that it's appropriate for the public who don't have computers to have some ability to look at the backup of the agenda in terms of the items that are going to be before the Board, whether they're consented items or regular agenda items.
So Diane, so once you post it, it's available at that time?
It is, and we do have it available in the administrative office, and again, I have it available here for view. In four years, we've never had anybody ask for it, but we do have it available at all times.
Mr. Chair, if that much interest is generated by the public, I would recommend they search the free internet services or library, because if you're going to dedicate 30 minutes to look over this entire agenda, you're doing yourself a disservice. I understand the agenda's posted at 12 o'clock on Friday, and you're going to need more than 30 minutes to go through that if you're interested in content. So maybe the library might be a source where you have free internet access, or other areas.
Joe Kelly? This PILT, Payment in Lieu of Taxes, is apparently for federal payment. It's something that comes about every year about this time to be agendized, as I recall, or I've seen it numerous times, put it that way. So this is basically to gain tax revenue, or in lieu of tax revenue for you folks for government properties. I want to switch up a little bit, because the last time it came forward, and it was on the agriculture issue, and I brought up a fact about properties in the Williamson Act not doing anything and getting the benefit of the Williamson Act, and the Ad Commissioner came up and confirmed that. I want to know when it's going to be agendized for the Board to have as an open hearing and cause certain things to happen that those that are doing, not paying their full fair share of taxes, then get thrown out of the Williamson Act. Either be given the opportunity to get their act together and get it started, but then pay some sort of a fee or fine for not doing what they had stated in probably a documented but then pay some sort of a fee or fine for not doing what they had stated in a probably documented with a signature under penalty of perjury or something. But we need to get every tax dollar available that's out there that's not being done, not being given due to fallacies, corruption, whatever. Not just the federal government, come pay your P-I-L-T. Get all the rest of them, too. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
So it's a good discussion on access from the public to our agenda. And so we do provide that. I mean, I would encourage folks, if you have any questions at all, admin department will always be able to steer you in the right direction, wherever. If it's going to the library for resources, or if it's coming into admin office and finding out information about our agenda, just ask. You know, just walk into admin and ask. That's what we're here for, is to serve the public. So ask for a motion on number eight, please.
So I'm moved.
Second.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Kearney, and seconded by Supervisor Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So it's 5-0. Before you leave this, can I bring one thing up?
Sure.
Does everybody know where the admin office is? Do you know how to find it if you wanted to see it, Shirley?
Chair, can I speak back on what?
Can't do it, Joe. I'm with George.
I just, I think the point of it is that people have a specific item that they want to look at.
Yeah, so the admin office, if you come up the stairs from the parking lot, go directly to your left, you can go into the admin office, and you can find all of the information that you need to be able to, pretty much every question you could probably ask that's going on in our county for any information. And so, you know, if we print out a lot of this stuff, it's just, it costs a lot of money to do that. It costs a lot of time. It's just a lot better if we can do it electronically if possible. If it comes down to where we absolutely cannot live with that, you know, with that, then that could be another decision for another day. But thank you for bringing it up. Okay, number nine. Approve the attached letter in support of the Calaveras Watershed Management Project and authorize the board chair to sign the letter. Peter?
Okay.
Do you have another ribbon? Is that what it is?
Oh, please. No, I don't know. She might stick me with something other than a needle. But thank you. And I know it's reality sometimes can be a real asshole dealing with some of the principles that you're dealing with. But I want to thank you for trying. Hopefully, successful. And yes, please do it. And I would like, because we're going to have a representative going up to Washington to visit Pelosi, Feinstein, and Boxer. Maybe can visit McClintock also. But yes, thank you very much. That's all.
House of Gala Taxpayer Association. I, too, would like to thank Cliff for the work he's done on this. And some of the parts, I understand, are pretty good. But in reading the letter, I think it should be modified somewhat. It almost seems to suggest, in perhaps a vague way, the establishment of a regional government in regards to water. And I don't think that's a very good idea, because presently, water is handled through individual water districts or water companies. Same thing with sewer. And they have a board of directors. And in some cases, when these are mutuals, they have pretty tight control from the repayers. And sometimes when they're more government-oriented or a government agency, then the repayers sometimes are left in the dust. This happened with CCWD repayers recently. That's why they had the election. They tried to overturn these rate increases. So I think we need to preserve our existing government bodies and also private bodies and not have a threat of a regional government eventually move to take their authority and responsibility, and especially responsibilities that go to future planning. Each of these entities need to plan for their own services and their own future. I attended the workshops, which are quite long, on the water element. It was sponsored by CCWD, and we got free lunches, which were good. But I noticed that the direction seemed to go toward a transfer of planning responsibility away from those entities that are responsible to their taxpayers or to the repayers, toward the board of supervisors, and perhaps even to the planning department and the general plan. And to the extent that regional government is supplied, then it would go to some sort of joint powers arrangement, perhaps. I'm not sure exactly how that would work. But any time you, the further you remove control and control of planning away from the people that are, that receive the benefits, that really should, that own the system, the more likelihood of problems coming up in planning, and then, which could result in scarcities and could result in problems that otherwise wouldn't happen if you had that higher level of responsibility. So, to make a long story short, Cliff has done a good job. I would change some of the wording, which implies regional government, and have a clause in there supporting our existing constituted water districts. And that takes away the threat or the suggestion that there's going to be another level of government. Thank you.
Thanks, Doc.
Joe Kelly. The county has a floodplain management ordinance, storm water, and now potentially a watershed management ordinance. For those out there in TV land and those in the audience here that have not read this thing, I'll read the highlights of it, as I see them anyway. "The project seeks to build a collaborative planning platform to develop best practices and market-based incentives and approaches to watershed management. The board supports the establishment of a regional forum in Calaveras Watershed Management Pilot Project to address and develop innovative solutions affecting rural communities. The board looks forward to the development of a sustained resource management model necessary to support growth and economic development in Calaveras County." My comment. And you'll have to excuse me on this one. Nah, maybe not. It's a well-written Boe Meadow muffin letter. Too bad you don't issue a similar letter on the flooding in Nassau Creek, which would be under floodplain management or storm water management, that which you already have on the books. You won't do it. When you, the board, can't deal with such a smaller issue, a much smaller issue, how can the voters believe you can uphold such a grand reelection-based watershed management pilot project? How much of this pilot project duplicates CCWD's watershed management document? Why is the county bringing this forward when, in the past, the county wanted to leave water issues up to CCWD and stand far away as possible? If you years ago, the previous district three supervisor tried to pass off any connection of the county and CCWD, there was a division there, according to her. It didn't fly very well. She got caught and spanked on it. So tell us, ignorant individuals, what are the county's waters, or county or water, yeah, the county's water or watershed responsibilities, and what are CCWD's? Who is superior? Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comments?
George Frye. My purpose for having this pulled is that because it's a consented item, the people in TV land and the people here in the audience that don't have computers and so on and so forth, they don't get a real grasp of what's going on. Unfortunately, my computer crashed the day before yesterday, and I couldn't print the letter so that I could read it. And so I appreciate some of the letter being read. This is, you know, this is a really serious business. And as my comrade, this veteran who has left the audience, Mike Prescott, he's right on about all of this. And it's later than we think. And so I really would like to see also some kind of a guideline as to what the steps are going to be, even though it's in its infancy, and so that we can start beginning to understand and beginning to, as constituents, making suggestions on what we can do to enhance our watershed in Calaveras County. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot one more thing. I wrote it down, too. It's the first time that I've seen, in many years that I've been coming to board meetings, that we have a director from the CCWD coming to all of our board meetings since he got elected. So I would, I'm glad to see that's happening, and I hope that it goes both ways. And tomorrow, board members, if they don't have other committee meetings, have an opportunity tomorrow afternoon at 1 o'clock at the CCWD boardroom to be involved and embrace a workshop that the board of directors is putting on. I'm sure that they'll be touching on this issue as well. So I would encourage anybody, even in TV land, to come to that workshop and see what's going on. And let's see if we can't have more cohesiveness going on between the water district, board of directors, and the board of supervisors. Thank you.
Vicki Ranky. Mine is just more of a comment to kind of add to your big picture, and I know you're just starting to work on this project, is that Milkwise Coalition. I know you sit on that board. But anyway, just again, another piece that maybe has to be brought in or looked at as you're going to looking at our county thing.
Any other public comments? Any more comments? Make a motion to approve?
A second.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Wright. Well, should we do the amendment first?
Yeah. If you wanted to read program instead of project, it needs to be part of the resolution.
We have to have an amendment done on the word program, because our project, it's not, the project is the program. So instead of the resolution reading, well, if I can read project, it shouldn't say program.
Okay, I'll make the motion with the amendment. A second. All right. Motion by Supervisor Wright, and then seconded by Supervisor Ponte?
Well, he seconded the amendment, so...
Okay, okay. Supervisor Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
He opposed?
I'm going to like say a couple of things first. You know, this program actually does include all of the water agencies, and because they are stakeholders, it includes, and it also would include all of the agencies that are interested from beyond our county as well. And so this doesn't have to do with water rights. That's not our job here, really. That's the water agency's jobs to try to fight for our water rights. I'd like to, you know, have a hand in that to be able to make that more of a reality so that we can get as much water rights here in the county as possible. But this has to do with managing our, like, our lands to be able to make it more, or at least offer a program for people and for our federal lands to manage them for maximum water potential and minimum fire, wildfire danger. So the program explains all of that pretty clearly. I could probably explain it even more clearly as I, as we refine it. And it will be refined by everybody in the county, because we'll have public meetings to be able to do that, where everybody can stand up and give their two cents. I just wanted to recommend, you know, here, I'm getting all of the recognition for this, but I got to tell you that Supervisor Wright has been right next with me on this deal, and we've worked tandemly on it, because we feel that it is not a partisan issue. It's an issue for all of us, and we need to learn how to work together to be able to do what's right for our county and for California in general. Because this really does have to do with not just our county, but all of the foothill counties that are getting hammered by regulations and things like that to prevent a program like this to come into effect. And that's exactly what California needs, we believe anyhow. So I just want to make it clear that I'm not doing this alone. I have many, many folks that are, you know, helping me and that are behind me on this. And so, but I appreciate the support, and I appreciate the support from the board. I think that it could be a good future for our county as economic program. It would definitely create jobs. And so that's what we're after, really, also. So thank you very much. All right. So we'll go to item 10, Public Works. Adopt a resolution accepting the construction of the Arnold Rim Trail Cedar Center Bikeway Connection Project as completed or complete, approving the balancing contract change order, authorizing final payment in amount of $75,196.02 to Peterson Excavation Incorporated, and authorizing the board chair to execute a notice of completion. And Supervisor Oliver, you pulled this one.
Thank you, Chair. I have two issues I'd like to address regarding this. I'll take the first issue with the change order. I know it's maybe a small item in some folks' eyes, but I noticed that we changed an aggregate base from 232 tons to 346 tons. That's a 67% change as far as materials go. And I would like to know, wasn't that picked up in the original bid? Or what was the reason for the change order? And that was a $5,000-plus change. I don't see Mr. Pattinger here. Do we need to address Public Works? Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Deborah Mullin from Public Works. I was the project manager for this project.
Thank you for coming.
The increased aggregate base was part of the, a lot of that was needed to fill in against the parking area that was constructed as part of the project. Was not picked in, picked up in the original design, which was overall really close in its estimates of quantities. But on this item, it did go over considerably.
Okay, so we actually, it wasn't detailed in the original bid?
Correct.
It was extra work?
The way the hillside was excavated, yes, it turned out to be extra work.
So it was condition changed after the bid?
Yes.
During construction? Okay, thank you. Second issue I have with that, thank you very much. Probably for legal, on the acceptance of final payment, will the county assume all liability regarding this project? Or is there any issues that could come back on the Or is there any issues that could come back on the contractor? Should we find a defect in the construction?
Well, at this point, we are accepting it as completed so, and it would be a county-owned project, county facility, and it would be the county's responsibility. I believe that staff has been monitoring all of the construction so far, and at this point, with the notice of completion, staff has evaluated the construction. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct, and we have performance bonds in place that are, stay in effect for one year. And for ongoing maintenance, I was going to mention that the Forest Service is going to take on maintenance of this project, even the part that's on the county property. So we'll be coming back to you in, I don't know how long it's taken them, they're reviewing the documents that we have prepared, their lands division. So we will be back with a maintenance agreement of some kind where the Forest Service takes on the maintenance responsibility. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, Chair. Okay.
Yes, yes. I was here back in, what was it, a couple of, 15th or something, a couple of years ago, when this was whole sold, and there was a capoeira in here. Most of you were not here. They paraded all these kids in here, said, hey, I believe this is the one that they're going to be able to ride a bicycle from San Francisco all the way to the mountains. And it was great. So I went out to talk to those kids. I said, who's paying for this? The government. But, you, any, well, you wouldn't, but has anybody did a traffic study? What a demand for riding bicycles from San Francisco up to on this trail? Was there a electronic car plug-in at each entrance so you can, because you can take electric car, well, no, you know, you can make it back home, but you're not going to make it up there on an electric car. The point I'd like to make at is Public Works probably did a wonderful job, did it in budget, but something that sometimes the supervisors forget, the suckers who's paying for it is your constituents. To make somebody feel good that they can ride their bicycle from San Francisco up to these hills through the forest, they can't stop, they can't camp, they go from one end to the other to nowhere. But those kids didn't realize, you don't pay for it. Most of them, I'm not going to pay for it. The poor kid's going to be paying for it. That's why I'm, you know, that's why I'm hoping, but a side remark about that cost too much to printer agenda, I bet it's cost less for you guys to get a new notebook than print one of those books out once or twice a month. Okay? Let's get that straight, as a side note. Somebody's paying for it, and it's not going to be us, it's going to be your grandkids. When you do something make feel good bicycle path through that nice forest, you kids, you grandkids, you buying it, you borrowing money from those folks. I know it's complete, and God bless those folks at Public Works, but just think about the phony, too bad hypocrisy that's going on here. Did you ever think about how many unmaintained roads in this county, in each one of your district, but you have money to put a bicycle path? How many have, you know, if those folks realize it? I mean, CSA One has a little problem over there, okay, especially. But you borrow money to put a bicycle path so somebody can there, put their big fat butt pedal up to there on a bicycle? What's the demand for it? What's the benefits from it? For future? Don't make you sound like an idiot like some folks did before a couple of years ago. Total morons. And it's putting it, well, maybe I better hide this, you know? But if folks read the details, what they borrowing money for, to what end? That's despicable. Thank you.
Well, one thing Peter always gives me a chuckle with his colorful descriptions. This thing's been around for a long time. I had no, I really haven't paid attention to it. I didn't read it last night, but what Peter was saying brought up issues, what the Public Works person was saying brought issues to my head. What is the parkway construction made of? Is that a blacktop? Is it just a DG, something that's there? Or, or something that needs to be repaired on a, on a basis of some sort and being put into a road or maintenance system within the county? Who maintains and pays for maintenance and repair? And here's something, let's get into revenue on it. Those that want to ride it. I just spent some time, actually about 12 days in Silicon Valley. Let's start a rat race here for that bike path. You go down the freeways there, they got a diamond lane. Let's do the same thing with this. For those users that want to do it, they can walk it, they can ride it, they pay a fee, a toll. Let's start that in Calaveras County so we know how it gets paid for, and it's not coming off we taxpayers, but off the users. But the hell, California's doing it, why shouldn't we? Think about it. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none. Like a motion on this, please?
I'd like to make a comment. You know, it's, this has been a project that's been a long time coming. Having lived here for quite some time and walking in that particular area, it's nice to see this kind of multi-use trail, even though it's been called a bikeway right now. I see lots of people walking up in that area. That's one of the things I hear most times from people looking for a safe place to walk. So they're not walking on Highway 12, or 26, or 49, they're walking out among nature. And, and this is such a nice project to have in our community. And I know that there's been funding from different resources, and I want to compliment Deborah and her work in the final stages of getting this done because it's been a project that's been in the works for a number of years. And I think it's a nice asset to our citizens here, young and old, and those coming up. I know for me as a family, we recently took a walk on this trail, and it was a great experience. And I'm so looking forward to my grandchildren, when I do have them, being able to use this trail as well. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Can I second it? Well, actually, I'll defer to the supervisors of the district. If you'd like to second. Oh, I'll let your supervisor right with a second. Okay, I second. Okay, so Supervisor Fonte made a motion to adopt a resolution accepting the construction of the Arnold Rim Trail Cedar Center Bike Way Connection Project as completed, approving the balance, balancing contract change order, authorizing final payment in the amount of $75,196.2 to Peterson Excavation Incorporated, and authorizing the board chair to execute a notice of completion. And Supervisor Wright seconded the motion. I'd like to also say something. The other night, I was driving to Valley Springs, it was a little foggy out, and I seen a bicyclist on Highway 12, right on the bridge down there by, just out of town by Ham's Ranch. It scared the heck out of me because all that was, all that was there was a little red flashing light going across that bridge with, you know, cars coming through there. It's, it's a bad bridge anyhow, really, you know, if you're traveling 55 miles an hour. And many people tried to cruise around this county on bicycles, bicycles, and a lot of it's on Highway 12. I see them all the time on the side of the road, and I got to tell you, it's, it's, one of these days, I'm afraid of what's going to happen. So I actually appreciate some of these efforts that are being made to make alternative routes for transportation. And I feel that, you know, that, like Debbie is taking advantage of walking up there. I went up to the site and seen where the, it's up by Black Bear, and, and it's, it's, the way they did it is, I mean, I think Public Works did a great job on it, it's beautiful. It's a beautiful entrance, and the walkway is beautiful. I look forward to taking my, you know, we don't get a lot of time off, my wife and I. But this gives me a place to go and a reason to go there. So I'm pretty sure we're going to be heading up there soon. Either that, or she's going to kick my butt over something, so I've got to get that, that energy out. So, um, so I'll, I'll call for a vote, please.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. It's five zero in favor. Okay. So I'd like to move on, unless you, anybody wants to take a break here, I'd like to move on to the regular agenda. Okay? All right, so we'll move on to the regular agenda. And so it's item number 12, uphold administrative citation number 14-26 regarding Michael Cumo, 329 Gray Merritt Road, Avery, California, authorizing abatement of all remaining code violations, and the assessment of a lien on the property for recovery of administrative costs, administrative fines and abatement costs.
Good morning to the staff and to the board and to county council and to Shirley. Congratulations or my condolences, whichever you accept. I'm Courtney Minehart, and I'm with the Calaveras County Code Compliance Unit.
Okay. Come on, tell us about this.
What would you like to know? We started on this case in July 16, 2014. It was littered with numerous cars, motorcycle, boats, and parts. We've got numerous complaints from the neighbors in all of that area, not just like surrounding areas. And so we went out there, we wrote up the notice of violation, I talked with the gentleman, I went out there a second time, and I handed him the administrative citation, which he seemed to think that he wasn't going to do anything with. And he said he'd have everything done, and this was three months ago, four months ago, and he has done nothing except for, I think, maybe cleaned out the inside of the house.
Any comments here? Supervisor Wright?
Of course, thank you.
Is it?
No, we got, we have to have a definition. What's our fine up to now on this property?
We're charging him $10,000. Basically what that is, is we have been advised by the board to cap him at about $10,000. It's $50 a day, per day, per violation. What people need to understand is that breaking any one of the county codes is a violation in itself. So that's one. And then if you've got cars, junk, debris, all those get added on to it. So most of the people are looking at about $300 a day, per day, per violation to get it cleaned up. It normally ends up to about, about $58,000, and the board didn't want us charging that, so we kind of capped it at about 10. That's what we've been doing lately, or for the last 12, 12 years.
So this is your property for a previous board?
What's it? Yeah.
This particular property?
I didn't.
No, this particular property's been brought for a previous?
No.
Okay.
Now, the way that the Code Compliance Unit works, just to get it clear to everybody out there, is that we send them a notice of violation, we talk with them if they get back to us, and we try to work with them, and as long as they're showing some sort of progress and they're moving towards the end goal, which is voluntary compliance, then we work with them. It's to the point that we get to where there is no longer any, any progress, and they're bringing more stuff on, or they're, you're committing more violations, that's when the administrative citation comes in.
Okay, so we're at that point with this property?
Oh, yes.
You have not received any type of cooperation incentive from property?
I've got a lot of what we call lip service, but I've gotten nothing. The property is no cleaner, as a matter of fact, it's worse than it was the day I cited it. And we go out there and we, we photograph the residents so that we can prove to you or whoever that it's getting worse.
I feel by that property, it's poor.
And what did you think?
It's off my own eyes. Our next move is for us code compliance in regards to cleaning this property up. It's my understanding that we should clean that property up at their expense, we would backcharge them for that?
Correct. We put a lien on the property.
Put actually lien the property?
We actually lien the property.
What happens if the liens member brought forth to a sale?
We are a Teeter County, and we get paid back in three payments from the state. And what we don't want to do is, we don't want to over encumber the property, because if we over encumber the property, then the county is liable for that money. So if you've got a property that's only worth $20,000, you don't want to do a $40,000 cleanup on it.
What would your estimate of cleaning up this property?
Probably about $16,000 to $18,000.
$16,000 to $18,000. What do you, what do you think that value will that property is?
Again, I'm not an expert, but I would probably say that you could at least get $60,000 for it. The house seems to be in, in good shape, it's in a good location.
Would you consider this a, a good candidate property for cleaning it up and making this?
Yes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. But if, but if we're cleaning that up, the county is, we're basically going in the hole to do that, right? Because there's a $10,000 lien costing $16,000 to $18,000 to clean it up. So the county coffers are paying another $68,000 to clean it up.
Well, we have a nuisance abatement fund that we don't let go down so that, no, we are, we are paying it out of our fund. And then the state pays us back in three, three payments.
Okay.
According for clarification, you lien the property for both the fine and the cleanup cost, do you not?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, okay, now that brings me to a question. So the, the cleanup cost is not part of this, the cost of the cleanup is not part of this agenda?
No.
That would be?
A separate?
After you initiate the cleanup and the bills do that, that's going to be another potential lien on the property?
Correct. The way that it's been working is that they normally will come into compliance, we will reduce the fine significantly if they can come into compliance within 30 days, and we don't have to send out a crew to clean it up. But no, if we send out a crew, it would be on top of the $10,000.
And the maximum fine now is $10,000 that you're assessing, plus administrative costs?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So I can tell you about an experience I had here. There was a gentleman that had received a $10,000 notice, basically. And he actually didn't receive it, so he didn't know he was getting it. And largely due to his P.O. box had been expired. And, and so, you know, I checked on that to make sure, and yeah, it had been expired. So he came to me, we made, we came down here and talked to code compliance, worked out a deal, he has timeline, the, the fine is reduced to whatever administrative costs were set to it, so you aren't, you can't overcharge people. And so, but this person came forward and was willing to cooperate, and, and it wasn't a, you know, like a bunch of junk in the yard, it was because of a permit issue. And so, and now he had, he's on the timeline, I'm assuming he's following through with it. The fine is not going to be $10,000, it'll be something significantly less, and largely because he's just coming forward and, and working with the county in a positive way to come into compliance. So that opportunity is there, the code compliance is more willing to do that. They got to put something out there to get people's attention, and I think this is what, mainly what this is, and it, and it gets their attention, especially when it- what this is, and it gets their attention, especially when it, when they, he actually seen it on his property tax bill, and he didn't want anything like that on his property taxes. So, you know, then they work really fast to make things work out. So, you know, a lot of these problems are like, in this particular case, we don't really know what's out there. They could have diesel oil leaking into the ground, there could be a bunch of things. So it's, personally, I like a bunch of old cars myself, but, you know, they at least, you know, have to be in compliance with what the county, what the county ordinances are. So I'll ask for a motion on this.
One more comment, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah.
You have personal contact with this property owner?
Yes.
You have spoken to him and he's aware of the condition?
Yes.
And the action by code compliance. I agree with Chairman Edson that a lot of situations aren't appear what they are on the face. And I condone, I don't condone, I actually encourage procedure where we can work with our residents in this county to solve our problems. It's not always solved by writing a check or doing this, but I think, from what I understand, that this situation is beyond that point and it's time to effectively correct this code violation to the detriment of our residents in the county.
It most definitely is. And just so that, to clarify, we not only send out these notices, we post them on the property. And in this particular case, I hand delivered the notice, the fine, to this gentleman. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, another question.
Sure.
And as a planning commissioner, I work with you a lot on these, so I understand the process and what you do. And you're very thorough with working with people, and I know that. One thing that's changed since I was a planning commissioner, though, is the foreclosure rate in the country in general, including Calaveras, has skyrocketed compared to what it might have been then. When people move out of these foreclosed homes, which is causing some issues throughout the county, and they leave them a big mess, are you able to assess the liens on the mortgage holders? So, okay, on the East Coast holds the paper on a home, that is a mess.
Yes, that'll be the third one that we get to.
Okay.
It's covered it all.
Is it finished here?
Yeah.
Public comments?
Yes.
Think about due process. Who's the judge, jury and executioner? Who benefits from that money? I mean, we have in a fifty, a few problem that people are just walked away. And I receive them, and some people are in real estate, you can pile it on. But to me, in a basic principles, if a cop stops me in the street, you're licensed. Yeah, license plate light. I used to work swing shift in graveyard, okay? The poor rookie cop, he was shaking his hand, I put my hand, anyway, the bottom line is, he asked for permission to come in, check my car. And I can't tell him, no. Does the building department get a administrative warrant? Did he get an administrative warrant to go on a property? Who's the complainer? Has the neighbor's father complained that he's being damaged? Do we have CCNRs and DRC and those areas unincorporated? From my perspective, that's a good moneymaker for the supervisors, folks. 10 grand, let's, that sucker, you know, he's down and out, he's someplace in Timbuktu, put 10 grand on that, someplace along the line, somebody's gonna pay for it. Put it on the property tax. Folks, don't get to the point where you're gonna decide you're gonna be the judge, jury and executioner. You wanna do it? Get a warrant, get administrative warrant before you walk on someone's property and start searching around. Before you start looking at the dirt, oh, there you got a couple of old drips. He's got cars over there. He's not a car expert, don't worry about it. He makes money for you. You don't wanna hear it. But when you assume that you're gonna be the judge, jury and executioner, it stinks. Some people are not, you know, if somebody wants to live in a nice gated community, so you got DRC, you got CCNR, they wanna put up with that crap, bless their heart, makes them happy. Put that lady to work. Building department, go to her, get administrative warrant, so he can get on someone's property without invitation to walk on there, so he doesn't get, let's say, hurt. And if that gentleman's got a problem with it, he can't tell her to stick it someplace where the sun don't shine, go back to a judge. And somebody who's not gonna get a financial benefit. So you can all get a nice tablet and all that stuff. Some people are, a lot of people are, in this county, foreclosed, squaring and stuff like that. And make sure it's not a selective enforcement. And do just like any law enforcement agencies, you get permit, permission to get on someone's property that is a property white, not because one of the neighbors, hey, I don't like this house. He's got this 1960 Chevy sitting on there, and I don't like it. Go through the due process. I know it's crazy, you know, but go through a due process and get somebody in there who doesn't have, let's say, justifying their existence to work for the government. Just put it back on your head, you know? So there is something called due process, and I personally resent judge, jury and executioner. If a cop stops me in the street, give me a high time. I never argue with a cop in the street, but I will neuter him when he gets to court. That's the way life is. And you piling on somebody for whatever reason, who's got 10 acres or 20 acres, the reason he's up there, because he doesn't wanna put up with the neighbors. So they don't have to come and beg you and kiss your butt. Oh, lower it 10,000 to 5,000, oh my God, you're great. My butt. Come on, guys. It's a moneymaker for you. It's a moneymaker for his department. And that's not always necessarily fair. Have somebody in there who determine what kind of money you're gonna charge, how you're gonna charge it, and why you're gonna charge it, who doesn't have a stake in the game. Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Hey Cliff, is there any way that you can?
Excuse me, sir.
Check this guy out?
Yep, yep.
Try it, sir. Check the one, listen to him.
Try something, sir. You have to, you have to come to the podium and speak, number one, number two. You know, everybody has their right to speak.
What Joe Kelly has to say is worth listening to. I have listened to bullshit from that guy for 30% of the time this morning to, you know, be reasonable. Shut him up, get him arrested. I mean, this guy's crazy.
At the beginning of the meeting, I gave public comments, five minute period, that's what they give.
I'm listening to this moron.
Please don't get personal, sir. I've got feelings.
Mr. Kelly.
Joe Kelly. Thank you, sir. Kudos to code enforcement. When my wife and I purchased our Mountain Ranch property and when we purchased the Valen Quick property, there were blights. People up there on Mountain Ranch came down, dumped all their stuff on my property. These folks came in, I contacted them, they came in, they had ways to get rid of it. And it was through either state or federal funding at the time. Down here, I had cars, I had you name it. They came in and cleared it up, tires, cars, the whole bit. There were monies out there by higher governments to do it. I don't know if they're still there or not. But I do appreciate it. That's my kudos. Now I get into the thing Cory brought it up. Breaking any county code is a violation. Remember that, folks. Breaking any county code is a violation. So what I have seen in the past and currently is selective administration of these violations and breaking county codes. So the government code section, the owner of a parcel upon which the nuisance is found shall be liable for all costs of abatement incurred by the county, including but not limited to administrative costs and any and all costs incurred by the physical abatement of the nuisance. So previously, I had asked under, months ago, I brought it up, are code enforcement employees sworn peace officers? Because I had read some information on a senior officer and a lesser grade officer. So are they peace officers, sworn peace officers, not necessarily carry a gun? How does code enforcement citation differ from the highway patrol, city police or sheriff's citation? How does the county legally bypass the courts for due process? Because I read in an article back in 96, 97, where Ray Waller, who was public works director then on code enforcement, was in the courts. So I'm wondering, hmm, how'd they lose the courts after that? Why is the public nuisance different than a public nuisance regarding flooding? Breaking any county code is a violation. Under public nuisance, does code enforcement have a jurisdictional authority over flooding Why does Calaveras County adopt international property maintenance code citations? Have we subjected ourselves to a world government, one world order, and given up our sovereignty? Can a copy of the citation be displayed, or a blank copy be displayed so the public can look at it? How is a citation valid? And I put here with or without the person's signature. So if it's, if it's a citation with his signature, and yet it says, you're not admitting guilt or anything else, it's just like you get a traffic ticket, you sign on, yeah, okay, I got it. So, but if they don't sign it, how does it make it valid? If it's mailed to them, if it's handed to them without a signature of a copy for the agent of the county? What is being done about the backlog of issued administrative citations, which was discussed during the budget of, what was it, some grand number in the thousands? And we're, and then finally, were the property owners, the legal owners of the vehicles, boats, trailers, or were those items deposited on their property by the rightful legal owners, such as happened to me in Mountain Ranch? There's key questions, folks, that need to be answered, all 10 of them. Thank you.
Hi, Rebecca Callan, Auditor Controller. I just wanted to clarify something. When Courtney's talking about the three payments, he's referring to property tax payments. They're not state payments, they're actually local tax payments. The, when a code compliance lien is put on a property, it's on the secured property and therefore it is in our, under our Teeter program. So worst case scenario, if you put a $10,000 lien on a property and the property only ended up being worth $10,000 and they owed $5,000 in taxes because, for whatever reason, penalties, blah, blah, blah. We would get our property taxes first and then the code compliance lien would be secondary. So we haven't seen them happen too often, but we have seen it in the last couple of years, a handful, just a, just a small handful of properties that were not recovered in terms of the code compliance liens. So what happens is the, the monies come out of the Teeter apportionment fund, and that is what goes to code compliance to pay for the nuisance abatement and those activities. And then the idea is that when that gets repaid by the property owner, it will replenish that delinquency. However, there have been times there where there was not enough money in the ultimate sale of the property, when it did go to sale, to cover the property taxes, any liens on the property, and then, so there wasn't enough for the code compliance lien. So that means it actually became a loss against the tax loss reserve. So it's important, and code compliance has been really good about making sure that they don't over lien on a property. They are looking at kind of what the value of that property is and what other potential liens might be on that property before they would issue a $40,000 code compliance lien. Because the reality is, we're probably never going to get that $40,000. And if worst case scenario occurred and it did go to sale, we would not recover that money. So that's the other reason why we have Teeter, is to cover those types of losses. Not only losses from sale of property taxes, but also losses from code compliance violations. So that's just something to keep in mind. So as long as code compliance does a really good job to kind of marry those two things up, then, then it seems to work okay.
Yeah, Rebecca, I have a question. When you mention a handful, so say in the last two years, how many code compliance and kind of a ballpark number of?
I'd have to go back and look. I think it's been two or three. So what'll happen is if code compliance realizes that it's going to sale, or they've done everything they possibly can, there is a lot of ability for code compliance to bring down their administrative charges. They can't forgive the hard costs. So if they had to contract with whoever to go out and haul the cars off the property, those are hard fixed costs. But they can negotiate down their administrative costs. So sometimes what they'll do is, if the original kind of bill was gonna be $15,000 and $5,000 of that was for administrative costs, they can forgive a portion of their $5,000.
So in the last two years?
I think it's been two or three.
Two or three? And are you talking about a loss of $10,000?
Well, I'd have to go and look. It's probably in the tens of thousands. I mean, it's not, it's not an astronomical number. But I think it was probably two years ago, we were talking about the expansion of code compliance and really going out and managing those administrative cases. And the concern to me, because we're also using Teeter to balance our budget, was you all just have to be aware that we're kind of using those funds. So if we did a pretty thorough expansion of code compliance, given that that would mean quite a expansion of Teeter usage in order to front the money for those code compliance violations, we have conflicting priorities. So thus far, there really hasn't been a major expansion of code compliance. I mean, there's still two code compliance officers. So they are doing the best that they can, but they have been really good about managing what they have.
Curious if we're talking about dozens of these situations and if we're talking about several hundred thousand dollars, you know, just kind of?
No, it's been, it's been tens of thousands, and namely, when they realize that it might be going in that direction, they will look at their administrative charges and forgive what they legally can forgive.
Okay.
You know, the reality means they have to get the money from somewhere. So, I mean, it comes from alternative sources, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Rebecca, I have a question. How many cases have we actually been involved in where we were positive in action like this?
We don't make money off of them. So what will happen is it goes to fund code compliance. So it goes to fund their administrative costs and the hard costs for cleaning up the property.
Would you, would you say that the number of cases that are positive versus the number of cases that are negative when we go to a code compliance situation with a Teeter bunch? Is there a way to track that?
Most of them, most of them are positive. I mean, we've only, we've only had to take a loss on, on a couple, or a few. But I would say that might be indicative of the fact that generally, they are managing the cases that they know are gonna have a positive result. Because you can't get blood from a turnip. So, you know, they're, they're doing the best with trying to work with the property owners that actually are going to try to make some sort of, or if there's some major calls, if there's, if, I mean, if your phone's ringing off the hook, you're obviously going to squeaky wheel gets the grace. But, you know, they, they're trying But, um, you know, they, they're trying to be strategic on, on how they're managing these cases.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead.
Uh, I'm also a taxidermist association, also a Realtor. I, uh, I, I'm kind of grateful to see the county being cleaned up, especially if I'm trying to get a listing and there's a junkyard next door.
What's wrong with junkyards?
Well, you know, it's.
Come on, that's private property.
It's been said that, except for West Point, uh, most, uh, most people would, would, would agree that, uh, one, one man's junk is another, another person's treasure, you know? And so there's a lot of treasures in, uh, in West Point.
American hipsters coming to Calaveras County.
That's right.
But, but there was an issue brought up about procedure, and about fairness, and about justice. Uh, I've been coming to these board of supervisors meetings for about six years now, and I can't recall an accused person ever showing up to try to defend themselves, or to give an excuse, or, or anything. And every, every single one of the administrative actions were approved, and, uh, and I know that they really worked with the people to try to find a resolution before coming here. I also am aware that there's another process the county has regarding, uh, uh, in septic problems, where the, the, uh, the property owner is not given a citation, well, maybe he's getting a citation, but it's also a subpoena. He needs to show up to court, and I think it's municipal court. And then the judge sometimes will, if they show up, will, uh, come up with specific solutions or, or something like that. But, uh, I don't, I wonder if that process would be better than bringing these to the Board of Supervisors? Because it's more, it's a more legal format, the person can defend themselves, they, if they want to, they can, you know, have an attorney, the right to cross-examine, and there, there's things that you can do in the court system that you can't do in front of a public tribunal. Uh, maybe the, uh, the county council can, can give some thoughts on that, but it's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Chair Edson. Um, with due respect, I'd like to keep focus on this particular agenda item with this person. Um, I understand that there's probably lots of, uh, good ideas to, to flush out in regards to how we handle code compliance, and what avenue, and who's a sworn officer, and who's not, and how we find, and this sort of thing. But in this particular case, we do have item twelve on our agenda, and, um, I'd like to try to maintain that we stick to this particular item and the merits of this item on the agenda.
Sure. So, uh, the only question I had for, that I think that Courtney should answer is your right to access on the property. Want to explain that?
Um, as Michael could probably verify, you don't actually need to access the property to see it. You can see it from a public right-of-way. In the cases that I'm told to leave a property, um, I do so, and then I do get an administrative warrant, and go in there and do it that way. And I also have eight thirty-two, which gives me the right to, to write the citations. And we could go on with the whole laundry list, but we've been following the code. I've been doing it for thirteen years, and it's good to actually hear the financial part, because Todd always takes care of that.
Yeah.
So that was why I had a vague idea, but that's it.
So, uh, as far as Mr. Kelly's questions, I think, uh, Mr. Kelly, if you could maybe go to code compliance, he could probably answer most of those questions for you, uh, because.
I was on point order, they were asked during the public comment.
I understand.
On the issue, and I think someone should kind of tell the public to hear it, because if I go to code enforcement on my own, the public is not going to hear it. Either that, or this county board of supervisors questions them to my, to my questions, and I will provide you, if necessary, a copy of them, and then you can post them on the paper, newspaper.
Why don't you do that, then, Joe?
I will, sir. Will you, will you take advantage of it and post it in the local newspapers?
I'll take advantage of it.
Thank you, sir.
I'll post it here.
I ask that you make it for the public, not, not just for the.
I, I just let you know what I'm going to do.
Okay, fine. Now, when, when you do it, send me a copy, and I will post it in the two darn newspapers.
Thank you.
If they'll do it. Thank you.
Okay, so. Here we go. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any other public comments? We have a second, and then we can have more discussion.
My name is Herb Laird, and I'm speaking from experience. If you have a situation where a person is intractable, not rational, with regards to their code enforcement, do we have a process where they're evaluated for mental illness? Dementia? Dr. Nicolich and I had an experience where we spent about a year helping a gentleman who was strictly on his own. He had no help, no diagnosis of mental illness, uh, but he was, had two properties in foreclosure. Eventually, later on, uh, he had a property that, uh, they threatened to tear down, a million-dollar property, by the way. And, uh, none of this made sense, looking at the whole picture. And the problem is that this gentleman had dementia, and he needed some assistance from professional people. And the problem is getting, uh, the problem in the hands of a professional who has the authority to act on his best behalf. In this particular case, we did get him connected with an attorney. Uh, I would have suggested a certified financial planner also. But, uh, as I say, if you find somebody that is just totally irrational, maybe there's a reason for it, and maybe we can save that person. Thank you.
I'll make a motion. I'm making a motion to approve. All right. I'll second.
We had a previous motion.
We had a motion and a second.
Right. I'm just asking who it was.
Oh, the motion was by Supervisor Wright, and the second was by Supervisor Ponti.
There we go. Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Wright, and a second by Supervisor Ponti to uphold administrative citation number fourteen dash twenty-six regarding Michael Humo, Street Twenty-Nine Gray Mare Road, Avery, California, authorizing abatement of all remaining code violations and the assessment of a lien on the property for the recovery of administrative costs, administrative fines, and abatement costs. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's five zero. Uh, I've been asked to take a short five-minute break. So we'll return in five, uh. Uh, we're still on the regular agenda, item number thirteen.
Courtney Minehart, code compliance, round two. So we're bringing you to, uh, this one here is fourteen dash twenty-five. It's Teagan Sterling, Etol. It's fourteen seventy-two Gorley Lane in Railroad Flat. Um, I was called out on this one, March twenty-third, two thousand and ten. Um, don't know how much of that I want to get into, but when I got out there, there was, uh, lots of junk and debris, um, I mean, lots of junk and debris, two or three trailers, um, and just household trash throughout the property. And, um, I have been in contact with her several times, matter of fact, probably thirty times or more, trying to get this place cleaned up. She hired a contractor, um, and she actually went to the point of getting her Hazwacker certification to clean up one of the trailers that was out there. Um, but nothing has generated from that. She sends me a lot of pictures of a little spot cleaned up here, and a little spot cleaned up there, but the property is still, they, they, you know, like you said, two thousand and ten, they've done some, they've made some progress, but you would have thought that it would have been cleaned up by now.
Other comments on this item?
Number two-five's going to be quick. There's a slight solution that be, that, uh, might avoid all this. And if you think about it, and it's, nobody's on this board's fault, think about it, white people leave their property like that. White people walking away from their property. There's not, there's not enough money in it to worthwhile to do anything, it's just cheaper to walk away. Whose fault is that, folks? The value of the property goes, people walking away. Do they really give a crap? They're going to take the copper and aluminum and all that stuff? The bottom line is, underlying problem is that people are just walking away from the properties in this county. It would be nice to think about that, what can we do to make it worthwhile to stay around, keep it up, put money, put effort, put sweat and blood into your property? So, that might be a better solution in the long term, instead of, hey, it doesn't work, that, screw this, I'm boogying across Nevada. Value of the property could cure a lot more. Whoever's going to come in, that, hey, it's worth hanging around. Opportunity for jobs, better schools, services. Thank you. See, I just, nothing against you, sir.
Now, speaking to this specific agenda item.
Thank you.
It seems like there's been effort made to correct the problem. It looks like the problem is not corrected yet, and I would suggest that unless there's a health issue or something pretty significant, other than an eyesore, that the department can continue to work with the lady, with the ultimate goal, which is to have her property cleaned up, at least to the level where it wouldn't be considered a, a, a violation anymore.
Joe Kelly, I'd like to go back to what the gentleman was saying about mental health, is to attempt to see what the age of the, is it a lady that owns the property, or gentleman that owns the property, to see if maybe they're in the right, uh, position of mind and understanding. For the benefit of the folks out there in TV land, and those that have not been able to read this thing, Calaveras County Sheriff's Department requested assistance concerning numerous code violations. Uh, numerous violations were identified, junk cars, recreational vehicles littered the property along with fifty-five gallon drums of waste oil, car batteries, paraphernalia related to the manufacturing of methamphetamines. Based on the information received from law enforcement, two vehicles on the property were directly linked to the manufacture of methamphetamine. If, uh, May sixth, two thousand and ten, it was determined that two of the vehicles on the property were directly linked to methamphetamine manufacturer, would need to be evaluated by an industrial hygienist prior to use or destroyed. That brought our environmental health department into play here. So I only have two questions on this one. Who owned the meth manufacturing vehicles, the property owner or others? And were they arrested since the sheriff was brought in? Thank you. And this is, when you get into this type of thing, it does become a public health, safety, general welfare of the citizenry, your three primary positions in this county of what you need to deal with. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Any board comments? Do I have a motion?
So moot.
Second.
So I have a motion by Supervisor Ponti, second by Supervisor Turney, uh, on uphold administrative citation number fourteen dash twenty-five regarding, uh, Teagan Sterling, Etel, fourteen seventy-two Gorley Lane, Railroad Flat, California, authorizing abatement of all remaining code violations, and the assessment of a lien on the property for the recovery of administrative costs, administrative fines, and, and abatement costs. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Five zero. Item number fifteen. I'm sorry, item number fourteen. Uh, it's another, uh, administrative citation. Go ahead, Frank.
Courtney Minehart, code compliance, Calaveras County. We issued fourteen dash thirty-three to Beverly Young, Etel. The property is located at seventy-six fifteen Baldwin Street in Valley Springs. This is one of the cases that you guys have been kind of talking about. You can call it a squatter, you can call it whatever, there's no hot or cold running water in the house. I have posted this house more times than I care to remember, and every time, the postings are pulled down, which is a misdemeanor. Um, I put them up in a different place, and this, whoever's doing it, I have not contacted them, because they are not on the record of deed. They just pulled down the, the red, the red part, so I've got all my little tape, and I've got it all over the, the property at this point. They won't come to the door, they don't answer. Um, obviously, we don't have, and I didn't get an administrative warrant to go inside to look if somebody's actually there. I just know that, um, there's always signs, there's garbage, trash, in the trash can. It's not, it's more of a, the neighbors, the neighborhood complaining about the fact that somebody is squatting in the house. And it is a substandard structure, because there is no power for heat, and there's no hot and cold running water.
Any other comments?
I have a question. So on here, you list the person's name, is that the owner of the house, then?
That's the owner of the house. Oh, the owner on record.
Owner of record. Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Chair Edson. The owner is not the resident of this property?
No, it's not. And how do we know that? The person who we believe is living in the house posted papers in the window stating that, um, uh, the, the owner's deceased, and stating that the, um, that they are the legal owners of the property, which doesn't really matter to me, because it's a substandard house, not by who owns it, but by the condition that it's in. And the fact that it has no way for sanitary, for your hot and cold running water, or for your, your, your septic or sewer system, and they have no way to heat the house, it's a substandard building.
Thank you. I have a question. So, um, what are you going to do then? Like there, Dan?
No. Um, basically, we do a board up on it.
What's that?
Uh, we would do a board up on it, if it came to that point, that's what, what we do. If there's nothing structurally wrong with the house, we don't tear them down. We'll go through and board them up, we strip out the screws, so that it makes it harder for them to get back into it, and we just basically try to dissuade them from going back in.
Yeah, so, um, have the policeman called out there to, um, talk with whoever's staying in the building?
Uh, numerous times, they won't come out for them either. Um, the door was been kicked in twice that I know of. Um, we were able to gain entry because of the fact that the door was open when we got there. Um, again, you're just looking in the door, we're not physically going into the place, and, uh, to take pictures, and you see bicycles and parts, and, you know, beer bottles and whatever. Um, but, uh, no, they've been out there numerous times, and they have not, I had extra patrol go by at night, so that, you know, they could figure out who it was that was in there, if the person even on the, uh, the placards, if they are even people that are there. And, no, they haven't, but they've gotten several calls, um, by the neighbors, and the neighbors I've talked to have told me that he comes out there and he tears down my tags, and he goes, "I, I legally own this." And again, it's not the fact that he might legally own it, I'm not in dispute of who owns it. owns it, I'm more in dispute of the fact that he's got no power and he's got no water. So, it's a substandard building.
Chair, I have a question. And the situation, as I understand it, the listed owner is deceased. Is there any way to determine who is the estate, or who would be responsible for that property?
What we do, just so that everybody knows, is we go and we pull the deed of trust for the property. And we try to contact the bank, whoever's on that deed of trust, and in this case, we got no response. The only response we got when I posted it, and I kept seeing the postings coming down, was there's some paperwork that I took pictures of, that we're trying to run down to see, because it's nothing that is recorded with the county. But again, the point that we're here is not that who owns it, they've definitely been notified numerous times by the postings on the property that say, it is a misdemeanor to occupy this property, and they keep tearing them down.
Is this a quicker process when you're looking at squatters, or whatever you want to call them, than, say, some of the other co-compliance issues that have come up today? Because I know, working with you in the past, you're very patient, and these things take investigations that span years.
It is definitely, it's a little bit quicker as far as the investigation portion, because once you contact PG&E, and once you contact the water district, and they tell you that they have not had service, their service has been disconnected since this date, we know that they're out of compliance with, you know, being a substandard building. So, it does go a little quicker in that, but we do make every attempt, again, I've been to this place probably eight, nine times, knocking on the door. There was a time that I knocked on the door and I could hear a radio in the background. Okay, the place has no power, so with a radio in the background, it tells me somebody was probably there, they just wouldn't come to the door. And we, like I said, we make numerous attempts before we do anything, to try to get these places to come into compliance voluntarily.
Has anybody checked to see if they're robbing the power?
We kind of do a cursory check on the outside, which is a good idea, but there's all sorts of ways that you can be stealing it from the inside, that we don't have access to, to look without getting an administrative warrant. But, again, we know that they don't have power, there's no lights on, there's no water, we go up to the spigots on the outside and turn them on, there is no water to the house. So, I talked with the water agency, and they told me that they went out there, and the person that actually tried to bypass the meter, and basically, they caught him in the middle of bypassing the meter, and he took off. So, he was there, he's trying to get water and stuff in there, and again, just so that the public knows, we don't get to this point until we've exhausted all of the things that we can do to try to get these people into compliance.
I've got a quick question, and really just want a brief answer, hopefully. When you say administrative warrant, I think a lot of people understand what a criminal warrant is, or something of that nature. To me, it seems like you've got every reason to do that in this case. What is the process?
It would be the same as doing a search warrant. We have to show probable cause to the judge, and the judge signs over the administrative warrant for entry to a particular property or to a particular structure. Again, you have to spell out, it's just like a search warrant, everything that you do.
So, just so everybody understands, you are going to the court system to get an administrative warrant?
Oh, yes.
Right, okay, thanks.
Public comments?
Are the children involved?
Hang on, I think, you guys want to wrestle, see who goes first down?
Yeah. Oh, you could kick my butt. Would you folks like to tell me how many homes in this county has to bring water to their house, truck water into their house? There's somebody from CCWD that they have no water, that's one thing. So, that's not good enough, hey, he has no water. Another thing is, electricity? I'm planning to kick PG&E out of my house, because I got solar panels, so I'm gonna, because they've been used to pay me, now they decided not to pay me, so let them buy their electricity from someplace else. So, that doesn't count. There's no law that you have to have electricity in the house. And if you have one warm, you get another jacket. That's against, is not against the law. I mean, don't use that you can't live there, okay, let's get real. A lot of people out in the country live without electricity and water. They make their own water, make their own electricity, so that's irrelevant. Now, the other thing is that, there's another solution, folks. You got a problem with the building department, put a fence high enough that nobody can look in there. Put a lock on your gate. Why should you be a witness against yourself? What benefit you got? I mean, I'm just playing on a devil's advocate over here, but get real. If you put a lock on your gate, put a fence that nobody can see in, from obvious thing, you better don't show a peek over my fence, because that's going to invade my privacy. So, think about it. You don't have to have water, because a whole bunch of people in this county are not getting any water right now from their services. So, they have to truck water in. That exists right now. And no, you can have a barriopera lantern if they want to, or a radio. That's not a crime. So, think about it. And yes, they can sell the administrative warrant, go stick it, and then they can go back to the judge, or have the lawyer go back in there and say, you got to do more on that.
The question I had, are the children involved? You mentioned that there was a bicycle inside, was it a children's bicycle? Okay, so, there might be another concern, would be the people that are concerned with children's safety, if there's a meth lab there, or something like that, perhaps it's not a good environment for kids, and so, there might be another solution along those lines, and perhaps some action.
I have a couple of comments. One, are the taxes paid in full at this point, number one. Number two, are there any vehicles there at this point? And if so, are they operable? And if so, has anybody contacted the sheriff to run the license plate, see what you could find out there? The thing about the water, and electricity and all of that, I don't think is germane to what's going on with this particular issue. It's just, to me, in child protective services, if there's children involved there, then child protective services should be contacted, if they haven't already. I'm just exploring ideas that may or may not have already been considered.
Vicki Renke, I just have a quick question on, when do these things become a legal issue, rather than a, I don't know how to term it, civil issue, I guess, because I hear the word squatters, and I, again, I'm asking, being naive, but is that more of a legal issue, having people in a piece of property that does not belong there, and then finding the real owners of the property to clean it up, and be penalized for whatever their property is? Anyway, just curious.
Joe Kelly, on the broader picture, up to this item 14, and but the last two items also, all three included, have become so much encompassing, that so much broader information has been delivered to we, the citizens, and to the people out in TV land. So, thank you. That's what we're looking for, is an understanding of everything that goes on. Now, I have two things on this one. It talks about a code for illegal camping. Well, define illegal camping, because we do have two codes regarding camping and living on property. So, how is it violating? The other thing is, is down on the second to last paragraph, says government code 25845B states, "The owner of the parcel upon which the nuisance is found shall be liable for all cost of abatement incurred by the county, including but not limited to administrative costs, and any and all costs incurred in the physical abatement of the nuisance." So, is this then, because it talks about the abatement incurred by the county, is this then subject to selective administration of those problematic properties for the administrative issue of code enforcement, because of the costs that come up to the county? Or are all, as was stated, codes that are violated, which is basically alludes to, or gives direction to, subject to enforcement? There is the question, folks, which I've been baiting for a long time, waiting, not baiting, waiting for an answer to. But, thank you, thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Do I have a, do I have a, what's the word? Thank you. Motion?
So moved. So moved.
Second? I mean, do I have a second? Suck. All right, so Supervisor Kearney voted, or motion to uphold administrative citation 14-33 regarding Beverly Young Etelle, 7615 Baldwin Street, Valley Springs, California, authorizing abatement of all remaining code violations, and the assessment of a lien on the property for the recovery of administrative costs, administrative fines and abatement costs. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Slide zero. All right. Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you.
I'm just noticing, it's been three hours, and probation staff is still sitting here, and I was just wondering if they could be moved up? They haven't asked, but it just appears to me that...
No, we're just going to stay on the agenda, it probably, hopefully, won't take that long for this point forward. So, number 15, appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas.
Thank you, Chair Edson. We have in our agenda packet the applications that have been received for openings on the Agriculture Advisory Board, Commission on Aging, Comanche Regional Park Advisory Board, First Five Calvers Commission, Fishing Game Commission, In-Home Supportive Services Commission, Hardwood Advisory Committee, Library Commission, Mental Health Board, Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Solid Ways Task Force. All of the applications that have been received equal the number, at least equal the number of vacancies. At this point, they are, except for the Fish and Game Commission, the Fishing Game Commission, although it does equal the number of vacancies, neither applicant is an incumbent, therefore vacancies that were unfilled. And for the Library Commission, one application was received, it was a new application, so a non-incumbent application for appointment, but again, that equals a vacancy that is there.
All right, all right. So, I have any public comments on this item? Any comments from the board?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, so I have a motion from Supervisor Ponte, and a second from Supervisor Wright, to appoint applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Slide zero. That was a good one, wasn't it? All right, item number 16, AB 109.
I realize I'm not supposed to touch the microphone, but I can only lean down so far. Thank you to the two new board members, or congratulations on being here, it's my first time presenting in front of you, and congratulations to CAO Ryan, it'll be an honor to work with you, and I look forward to doing whatever I can to help get us out of this mess. So, I'll try to be as succinct as possible, there's a lot of information in the document I've asked you to approve. Three of you are probably pretty familiar with what we've chosen to do. The two of you that are new, I'll try to give as much detail as I can without droning on and on, and then I'll leave room for questions at the end. To clarify, so I manage two budget units, the probation department, and also the AB 109 unit. And under the AB 109 unit, it's all state monies that are coming into that, and it's something that I chair with a partnership of seven voting members. So, that would include the sheriff, the public defender, the district attorney, behavioral health, as well as the other partners, I'm forgetting, but basically, we put together this voting plan, and the money was approved back in November, but what we didn't do was really update the narrative that goes along with that. In 2011, 2012, when the, when realignment passed, we did an initial plan saying, here's how we're going to spend all of that money we're receiving. Well, at this point, we're receiving over a million dollars a year from the state for that AB 109 division. And frankly, Governor Brown wants to know how that money is being spent, in each jurisdiction. When they did that legislation, they didn't really mandate that we report certain things, as well as they should have, so what they did is, after the fact, they incentivized it to say, we will give each county a set amount of money, for small counties, which we're included in, we get $100,000 a year that goes into that AB 109 fund balance, if we complete a survey and keep our reports updated. So, basically, the report updating wasn't really a requirement, but it's moving in that direction, and frankly, with all the money we're spending, I think there's an importance to having some transparency, and being able to see it all in the document that you've all had a chance, hopefully, to review, to see, here's how we're choosing to spend that money, to hopefully reduce the impacts of what AB 109 has had on us locally. So, hopefully, that provides enough background of why we're in front of you. These budget decisions, again, were passed, they were voted on unanimously by the CCP. We then wanted, so we kind of did this backwards, we've created the narrative in the format that you guys have, so that we can have something to give to the state and say, here, Governor Brown, here's how we're spending it, but also so that locally, everybody has access to see, here's what we're doing. Frankly, not every county has opted to do that or to keep up with it, and we were one of them. I'm proud and I'm thankful to the other voting members of the CCP that have helped contribute to this, and so, thank you to them. I will give a quick program overview, which is really a recap of what's in this document, and then I'll just stop and take questions. So, this is, in essence, how the money is being spent, strictly on the 109 unit. One, we have an alternative sentencing programming, meaning your work program and electronic monitoring. This helps reduce overcrowding in the jail to quite an extent, as well as helps us keep a better eye on some of the folks that are coming out of prison and need that initial structure. So, we have everybody on an ankle monitor for at least the first 30 days, if they're post-release community supervision, person coming out of prison that's used to, frankly, 24/7 supervision. So, that's a great one, and that's not something that every county is doing. Anger management and domestic violence programming, for those folks that are being seen over at the day reporting center that these are need, or are being required by the court to participate in anger management, or DV, we have those services available and functioning well. Cognitive behavioral therapy, we have several forms of this. Moral recognition therapy, or MRT, has been the cornerstone of the day reporting center. It was being provided by BI Incorporated before, at the cost of $369,000 a year, to have three and a half private sector... and a half private sector employees. This plan, a big part of it, is replacing that with county employees, four county employees, two of which are deputy probation officers, so that we can increase the amount of supervision that we have over people for the law enforcement side, but also to get the probation officers more involved in the direct provision of programming such as MRT and Courage to Change. So Courage to Change being the other cognitive behavioral therapy group that we're running. Frankly, there's a lot of treatment being offered. And the ultimate vision is that folks will be, well, offenders will be receiving treatment in the jails, they'll be receiving, and I didn't talk about the two mental health clinicians, sorry I'm jumping around. Folks will be receiving better clinical services under the new program, they'll also be receiving more adequate supervision through probation. So it's kind of a win-win all the way around. So hopefully, from the jail to the Day Reporting Center, to regular probation or to the community and when they get released, there'll be more continuity of services that are being provided. So basically, the menu has increased of what we can do. Moving on from that, so that covers the treatment piece. Data, we have an analyst we've had in that position since last summer, Michael Hatfield, he's doing a terrific job. He's really trying to move us forward as far as creating some baseline measurements and performance indicators. I'm really excited about the work that he's doing, so that's some money that we're spending as well as making sure that we're measuring what we're doing. I've been somewhat critical of the evidence-based practice term being thrown around the state so loosely, not because I don't believe in it, but because the implementation of it is very sloppy at the line level in a lot of jurisdictions. My frustration with it has been that evidence-based practice to most people means that you go purchase something that's working well somewhere else, and then you try to do it here, and then you hope it works. Well, the problem is, if you're not measuring it here locally to make sure it's working for you, it might not work the way that it worked in another jurisdiction. And frankly, that's what Michael Hatfield, who's sitting here, is really helping us do, is catch up to this century to say, we are measuring what we're doing and is it working the way it's intended, so that we can do more of what works and stop doing what doesn't work. That's what evidence-based practice is. So glad to be spending that on the data piece. Education, we have the GED equivalency programming over there, you know, also personal finance programming and some basic life skill stuff. I think this is an area that we'll be looking to up what we're doing in some other ways and get more creative as time moves on, but at least at this point, we've set the bar to get people some basic minimum life skills and entry level into being able to go work and be contributing citizens if they're doing well. Housing, we do have temporary housing populations for those folks that are coming out of, specifically the prisons, you know, when they come out and they don't have any place to go, at least we have some short-term housing options for them now. It doesn't, again, it doesn't meet what I would hope to do ideally, but at least we have something moving there, so that's another point. Well, we have, basically through the Black Bart, we've got an arrangement with them where we have a couple of rooms that we can steer them to. Really what we need, you know, it would be nice to have more with regard to sober living arrangements and, you know, long-term situations where people can actually do some contributing as they start working and whatnot, but, I mean, we're ways off from doing some of these things. And at the very least, people need a bed to sleep in tonight when they get out of prison, we have that, so. Job skills, you know, the basics of transitioning some of these folks to just be able to do basic computer skills. Medical insurance for the jail, this is something we've been picking up through AB 109 to make sure we have catastrophic insurance. It's just an added cost with the realignment stuff. Parenting skills is something new to this. You know, we have realignment offenders, it may be seen as a juvenile probation issue, and it is primarily, but frankly, when we have adult offenders who are trying to, you know, restore their lives, if you will, and get back to a place of being a productive citizen, and they've already got kids who are aged, or even if they have younger kids or teenage kids, whatever it is, that's a big part of whether or not they're going to be successful. You know, when people resume the role of parenting and start to view themselves differently, that can have a big impact on whether or not they recidivate. So, we've started a parent project program, something my staff have been trained on and just started this month, actually, so probably the thing I'm most excited about back at Post-supervision release, that would be more like aftercare to make sure that we still have a door open for some of them if they complete supervision, but they're attached to the Day Reporting Center programming we're doing. We need to make sure that they're not just out on their own, that we are still available to these guys that are trying hard. And we have some really good examples of that right now, I won't name them, but offenders who we just, anybody would have bet against, who feel very connected to the Day Reporting Center or probation or whatever it is, and, you know, it's tough for some of these guys when they do well under supervision, and then once they're off supervision and they go and reoffend, because they, because we unfortunately fell into this role where we were the most pro-social people in their lives. That's a long-term problem. And it's okay for us to be the important, you know, the helping hand for a while, but we need to do a better job as a probation department and on the Day Reporting Center side of building more natural pro-social connections for people, whether that's through employment or the colleges, or through their natural family networks, basically the things that kept a lot of us out of trouble.
Do they ever come back? Is there a volunteer-type program?
Currently, there's not anything formal like that. It's absolutely something that we want to be doing. It's a really complicated issue, but you guys have probably figured out, I always have big ideas, doesn't mean I can always get them done. And that one's definitely on the short list of things that I'm excited about but haven't done anything about, to be quite frank. With this, we had to get caught up to a point of where the core services that the state would expect us to be doing and that go with the evidence-based practice thing, we had to be providing those with some level of fidelity and confidence to what we're actually doing. And I think this plan gets us there. And I think from here, we have a good, stable place of, now we're caught up with what a lot of the state was trying to do, which will then open the doors for us to raise that bar. And I don't plan on stopping short of that. I didn't mention substance abuse, I'm very thankful for our partnership with Behavioral Health. Those guys are doing an amazing job, they've been working with me on trying to get clinician positions filled as well, but I don't want to overlook the efforts that Neil, our substance abuse counselor, has been doing over there. A lot of the offenders rely on them. And then finally, transportation, which, we have a lot of probation aid, extra help hours, where we're giving people rides when the bus schedules don't work out. That's another one that frankly, we'll have to look at, but at least we have something for now. So it's a, as you can tell, it's a comprehensive plan, there's a lot of directions that we've been pulled in and spending this money, I hope I didn't drone on too much, some of you have heard this several times, so I'll shut up and take questions regarding the plan.
Any questions from the board?
I thought it was a good report, it was easy to read and caught me up on areas that I wanted to know about. The one thing I saw was the performance metrics. Do you plan on bringing back a presentation of, because I mean, I'm interested in how's it working, how are things going?
Yeah, absolutely. It, we want to, yeah, we'll start there. And we did promise to come back in October, I think it was originally, it was October or November, I had said last summer that we'd come back and do a presentation on some of that. And we did run some initial data, and if we want to put Michael on the spot, we can get him up here to do some data out of the top of his head, impromptu. But what we found when we ran the initial data sets was that we just weren't getting our money's worth out of what we were doing with BI. You know, we had a, I think it was a 28% completion rate from the Day Reporting Center, frankly, not that many people getting through it, and when you look at the cost of what that was, you know, it just wasn't working out too well.
Maybe in the future, I don't want to put anybody on the spot and ask them to, you know, dig up numbers when they're not prepared to do it, but.
Well, you got to start with the baseline first, though.
Right.
We're getting there. We, you know, we have some things, but it, sometimes it looks so simple, and then you go to pull back, what does recidivism look like? And it can be an hours-long debate between me, the district attorney, who views it from a legal standpoint of what the code says, and this has to be a violent crime, and this has to be this because the penal code says it. You know, us viewing it more, you know, from a holistic standpoint of how does it affect the offender in their rehabilitation process and what really is recidivism? If it's, you know, five years out, is that even connected to the original crime, or is it a six-month measurement? And then the sheriff looks at arrest rates, and Todd Fordall, who I forgot on the voting members, you know, Chief Fordall, you know, he's looking at arrest rates, you know, it's not all about convictions to him. And so, just getting on the same page with that has been, even the state attorney general and the BSCC can't agree on it, not that that would surprise anyone.
And how does our recidivism compare to like counties and even maybe the state?
I can't confidently answer that question. I could talk about revocation rates, but I can't talk about recidivism because I don't trust any of the data that would be coming out of the other counties, because I haven't tortured it. And we're just kind of getting to the point where we're torturing our own data, and we're really dealing with a garbage-in, garbage-out situation there. So it's, it's really tough, and I could manipulate the numbers to make them.
Work for you?
You know, yeah, but I just don't, it wouldn't really mean anything, to be quite frank. We could talk about revocation rates, that's a little more clear, you know, or have arrest rates gone down, or reoffense rates, that kind of thing, you know, how many people have committed a new crime. But ultimately, you know, we'll come back with some PowerPoint data as soon as we have it available and show you what it looks like on arrests, on convictions, you know, on revocations to prison, the whole nine. So if all the numbers trend the right way, then, you know, hopefully that means something good.
Thanks. It was a very good report, though. One last question, when you got the $100,000 to do that, that goes in the AB 109 funds, correct?
I'm so tempted to make jokes. Yeah, it goes to the AB 109 fund balance, so I don't get to spend it, unfortunately, it's no performance bonus. And the fund balance there, I mean, it just, you know, we've been increasing, we've been increasing, we've been very, well, I should say, they were very responsible prior to me getting here last May, and we've continued to be that way, but what happened in September was they finally passed a permanent reallocation formula. So now we feel a lot more confident in having that money going forward, and we're not so glued to hold on to it. But at the same time, the, again, I run the probation unit, the 109 unit, the 109 unit doesn't solve all my problems on the other side, but it's kind of becoming where most of our supervision is done out of that AB 109 unit.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Other question? So overall, you know, I thought the plan was very comprehensive and every, in pieces in here, and I see, you know, it's nice that we're transitioning into being our own. You mentioned on transportation with Transit, what, do you work at all with our Transit folks at all to try to give them information as to what your needs are in regards to Transit for this particular program?
We were in contact with each other maybe three, four months ago, as far as what the routes look like and some of the obstacles or barriers that our offenders are having getting to the Day Reporting Center. You know, it sounds, here's a perfect example of what we go through, is, you know, I will make, well, my officers will tell an offender, they have to report every day, you know, whether they're doing treatment or this, that, the other, and that first few weeks, originally it was 30 days, you know, be here every day for a check-in. Well, the issue, if you're coming down on a bus, that it comes down, you know, at 6:30 in the morning and goes back at 6 o'clock at night, you're sitting there all day to check in. And we're hearing this over and over and not really doing anything about it. So, yes, we did discuss it with Transit, I have not followed up to see where they are if they're adding routes.
So it's kind of the timing of routes and how often, it's not so much a cost issue? Is that an issue?
It's a little bit of both. I mean, you know, you can only do so much with the budget that they, those guys have, so I don't want to nitpick on them, I appreciate what they're doing. I don't know if it's as much of a timing issue, if you're only going to have one route coming down and one route going up, I don't know.
How about the, for the participant to pay, though, to ride the bus, is that an issue?
No, we're getting on bus passes, we funded that.
Okay, so that's, all right.
Yeah. And then we, you know, we have a great network of probation aides who help transport with that. A lot of them are doing it extra help, so we have some money budgeted for that, and it's not always convenient, but it helps out. We can't be their taxi service 24/7, and it's a thin line there, but we do what we can to make accommodations for people at first.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any questions by the board? Good job. Any public comments?
House of Commerce, Taxpayer Association, that was a good presentation, and I learned a lot. It seems like, from a taxpayer's point of view, we'd like to see what's happening. In other words, are we winning the war on crime, or is it getting worse? On AB 109, the sheriff's office and also district attorney were pretty critical of that, and they were seeing some problems in our county regarding crime, because the transfer of the people that would normally go to prison was being turned over to the county, and then there were a lot of crimes that were formerly crimes then turned out not to be. And so the question, first question I have, is what is the real picture regarding crime? And it seemed like there'd be four parts to it, would be the number of reported crimes, the number of reported arrests, convictions, and then, repeat, criminals. Okay, those four can give us a picture, and it looks like the, that data should be available, it shouldn't, there's nothing to fudge there, and so, that would give us a temperature of what's happening in crime. Also, there's some possible opportunity, a lady by the name of Charity Manus, they're working with vets that get in trouble, and they've got a thing called Veterans Court that's connected with the sheriff department. And they also are setting up a mentors program, and I'm assuming these are volunteer mentors, which not, you know, not paid mentors. And I'm wondering if this can dovetail with the non-vets that are offenders. So that's a lot of questions, I hope it's not too many. Thank you.
I was kind of hesitant about this gentleman when it first came out, I said, that's another goody-goody, two-shootings, but he had some endorsement from some people that I'm glad I taken, and I promise I won't give him a hard time, so I'm not.
Gosh, you're going to get another ribbon.
Put it on the back, yeah.
Don't try to be nice to me.
I'm even depressed with that.
But another thing I'd like to point out, that's a question, and since you guys don't provide electricity to my computer, I have my memory, but there was a lot of services that you want to provide that's already being provided by Health and Human Services, mental health, childcare, and so on and so on. Is that addition to instead of? Or, I mean, those services are being provided by two county agencies, let's say, okay? That's one thing I would be nice to take a look into. The other thing is that, is there any way you can turn this into, so some of the victims get benefit out of this? Wouldn't that be nice? The people who actually got damaged or hurt or, whatever it is, okay, I don't want to go on, but this 109 can turn into some sort of benefit to the victims of those crimes. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
For the two new supervisors, I'm a retired state parole agent for the California Youth Authority, and I worked with youth for years. The youth in the Youth Authority are actually aged 12 to 25, so I was working with youth and adults because of when, whenever they were a and adults because of when, whenever they were adjudicated in terms of crimes they may, they have committed. I have been attending these meetings recently, and I think we're really blessed to have the chief probation officer we have. He, he is really tuned in to all of the kinds of things that really bring the probationary kinds of things for our county. I'm glad to see that Al was alluding to earlier, when the governor first signed the legislation for AB 109, I think it was approximately four years ago, there was a real uprising in every county in the state of California about how the funding was going to be shared amongst the DA, the sheriff, behavioral health, probation, and this county struggled too, the people did, but I, I have to tell you, it's, it is running so smoothly, and the programs that the chief probation officer is working on and developing are, I think, are really good, and I, I'm amazed that the analyst, that the chief probation officer hired this analyst and this guy. He's, he's incredible, I mean, in terms of the stuff that he brings to the meetings and, and presents and reports on, and so, I, I think we're really blessed. When you talk about recidivism, that can go anywhere, all over the board, and like the chief probation officer said, you can manipulate those numbers. When I worked as a parole agent, ironically enough, the lowest recidivism rate was, was sex offenders. There was only a 12% on average for the rest of the crimes. At the time I was working, it was around 80% recidivism rate for all the rest of the crimes. And I know that Supervisor Olivera is probably very familiar with that. So, I just want to extend my appreciation to what Mike and Sam are doing. Thank you.
All righty, any other public comments?
I'll do my best to answer some of these. With regard to your question about crimes, arrests, repeated offenders, we do have some data, I don't have it prepared for today, but we do have some data on repeated offenders or recidivism. So, I, I mean, we can make that available, especially on the realignment populations and our, again, our revocation to prison rates. So, we would have that. One of the things that, that was included in this spending plan was getting the district attorney a new data client management system, which will help get some data out of that as far as convictions go, and she's been great, DA Uke has been great of partnering with the CCP analyst as well, and he's been helping them, I think, look at that implementation. I don't know if we're RFP yet or where we are in that process, but it, it's a slow-moving train, but that will help us, I think, long-term as well. And then, you know, crime and arrest data should be available through the sheriffs and the police department in Angels Camp. If anybody's interested on a statewide level, I know that Stanford puts out a, a report every year. I don't trust some of the things that are in there, but I think for a general perspective on is realignment working, I think the Stanford report is, is something that if anybody was just a concerned citizen and wanted to look at it, hey, it's there, as far as looking at statewide trends. Peter, I believe you had a question about are we duplicating services from behavioral health to...
Health and Human Services.
Health and Human Services to what we're doing in probation. In some spots, we probably are because we're, we're building capacity that they might not have, so we're giving access to people who wouldn't otherwise get it because maybe through Health and Human Services, they need to, they have eligibility criteria that some of the folks we work with might not meet to get in there. In other words, there's nobody funding it. But as a general rule, no, we're, we're adding in new services. You know, frankly, and I have this debate with, with some of my friends in behavioral health or in the treatment field, that some of what we do is, is really different than what they do when it comes to rehabilitating and the treatment that we use. Our treatment isn't about having people feel better about themselves, or being less likely to commit suicide, or some of those things that are truly important, but aren't specific to what you guys pay me to do. What we do is about reducing the likelihood that somebody reoffends. And there are specific programs that are available to help us do that, and so, those programs wouldn't be run by Health and Human Services, they're programs that we have to do. As well as with the parenting groups, you know, a lot of what they do would be called psychoeducational stuff. You know, it's for parents who are more learning. With us, we're dealing with how do you deal with that difficult teenager, and it's more specific to the types of kids that we work with, or the types of kids that maybe some of our realignment offenders are, have been tasked with raising. So, that's just a few examples. With regard to Veterans Court, yeah, I've been proud to help push that forward as well. You know, Charity Manus has, has really done a great job in, in pushing us all forward. I know the newly-elected judges are planning on continuing to push that forward. It, it's a great thing for everybody involved, and, and we're looking forward to it. But, you know, as far as piggybacking on that for a volunteer network, I, I really think they're two very different things. I think, you know, when you talk about volunteering with some of our new, coming out of prison, highest-risk, in Calaveras County folks, it's, it's really a different deal than a lot of the folks that are going to be eligible for Veterans Court. And there's, at least in my mind, a lot of liability to be assumed and risk management things to think through. So, it's something that ideally I want to develop. Logistically, it's probably a nightmare, and, you know, I will do that kind of stuff through the proper channels, not just, you know, do it because I think it's a good idea. And then victims, I appreciate, who brought that up? Victims, was that you?
This floor.
Okay. You know, with regard to victims and what we're doing for them, that, that's something that the CCP, specifically DA Uke, myself, and the sheriff have, have pushed forward as far as, when we come back for the next spending plan, that it's something that's kind of bothered us of what we've done historically. We do have, we have funded some things out of it, it's not that we're doing nothing, but we're certainly not doing even a fraction of what we should be for the victims, and it's a complicated issue because it overlaps with the probation department. You know, one of the biggest things that victims want is restitution, and we've historically done a very poor job of collecting that restitution. It, it doesn't look good. So, we've been, one of the things that I know my administrative assistant, Brenda Norris, has been working on is to get the franchise tax board involved and, and to be able to work, is Rebecca here? To work with the auditor and, and make sure we're doing it right, but basically, to make sure that people aren't skipping out on the money they owe just because they're off probation or off whatever program of supervision, that we should be able to put leams on the people who owe money to their victims and haven't paid up, because frankly, they're not going to build more prisons for me to lock them up because they don't make restitution payments. And that's the reality of where we are. So, as much as, you know, if you're a victim, that's horrible to understand, and I don't like admitting that publicly, the reality is only the highest-risk violent offenders are really going to state prison at that, at this point. And the rest of them are being housed in our county jail when we can afford to house them and we have space, which is, I'll, I'll save that diatribe for the sheriff. But, you know, can we be doing more for the victims? Absolutely. And some of it's just basic empathy and availability on the part of my officers, and I, I think we are addressing that. And, and the other part is frankly going after the money. I, I should mention that, is it Kelly Fergaro, Mike? So, Kelly Fergaro, she's been involved in having some of her staff sent up to do, to have courage to change training for victims specifically, victims groups, and that's also paid for out of this plan. I'm not sure what the status of that is, I have not checked in on it, but I know that that's something that's in the works. So, hopefully that addressed the questions to the best that I can at this point. Any?
Lots of good things.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, move on, please.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the CCP implementation plan update for 2014-15.
Okay.
Second?
All right, so we have a motion by Supervisor Ponte, and second by Supervisor Wright, to approve CCP implementation plan update for 2014-15 fiscal year pursuant to Section 1230.1C of the Penal Code. The plan will be deemed accepted by the Board of Supervisors unless rejected by a forfeit of votes. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, it's 5-2. So, we have item 17, Technology Services, and it gets some education on our software agreements.
Good afternoon. I'm Stan Moore. I have lived in the county for, for about five years, and I was hired on to manage the Technology Services Division in July of 2014. This is the first time that I have had the pleasure of presenting to, to this group, so thank you for the opportunity. So, we're coming today to talk about Microsoft licensing, and so, you know, we, we all have to have licenses for the software we run. We have to have licenses for the software we run on our home computers, we have to have licenses for the software that we run on, on our corporate computers. That's the same as Microsoft as it is with any other software that, that we run, and legally we are required to do that. The county has had an enterprise agreement with Microsoft that gives incentives to the companies for, for licensing software in, in large quantities. The county has had this enterprise agreement in place for 15 years, renewed in five-year chunks. Microsoft has now gone towards more of a three-year as a standard than a five-year. It came up this year in the budgeting time, and, and we know that we are all trying to do more with less with tight budgets. We had elected initially at budget time to not include the enterprise agreement as part of our budget. Enterprise agreement was expiring at the end of December. Subsequently, we did more research, we, we got assistance from Microsoft, we dug in to find out what, what some of the reality was, if, if we did in fact let the agreement expire. Following that, we came to the perspective that, that we feel it is in the county's best interest for a number of reasons that are laid out in the supplemental, for, for us to continue the agreement with, with this enterprise agreement. The biggest areas that it covers are four components as far as the software itself. One is the use of Office. So, the, the components that you've got that would have Excel and Word and Access and some of those things that, that when you take a look, PowerPoint that, that are within Office, it's, it's that component. It's the, the actual operating system on the computer itself, Windows. It's the ability for your individual computer to talk to servers, whether that's for, for Windows, for Exchange, for your email, for databases. So, it's really those areas make up the majority of this enterprise agreement. There's some other components, but those are the ones that are, that are really costing most of, of the investment that we're looking for here. In addition to the licenses, there are components that are covered where we get training credits. Right now, the, the TSD department is in the process of taking 49 days' worth of training over the next six months or so that came out of the last agreement. Those train, those training credits, had we, had we gone out and, and gone to these courses without this, that was a $25,000 bonus. There are planning services where Microsoft will get together with us and, and help us figure out what, what we want to do with, with upgrades and what the best way is to, to go about that. There is a home purchase program that all of us can take advantage of as, as county employees, where we get the rights to use Office for a, for a very nominal fee, for $10. So, there, there are many benefits for the county in addition to the software itself. It, it makes it much easier for the management of the licenses on an ongoing basis, so there are some benefits there. The real biggest benefit to the county financially is that as we have needs to continue to go forward with these software components, we have the rights to upgrade without additional charges. That comes along with the enterprise agreement. So, as we have migrated through the years with Office from 2007 to 2010 that we're on now, eventually to 2013, and what's beyond that, we don't have to relicens as long as we stay within the enterprise agreement. That is a very, very large component. That is probably the biggest reason why I've seen in my past that people stay with an enterprise agreement. It's that ability to stay current with the software licenses, with those versions, and not have to relicens. Microsoft goes out of their way to have an incentive for the owners of these enterprise agreements in, in keeping current. We looked at at budget time at dropping out of the enterprise agreement and buying our way back in, in a year or two. What we found out is that there is a very steep penalty for having to do that. They will charge, when we did the arithmetic, it was about 80% more to buy back in than to stay current. So, there are a number of, of what we believe are very compelling arguments to stay current with the agreement. We've got 10 minutes or so here, I don't want to take up that entire time. I recognize that there is a lot of detail that we could go into, we could set up an education session that could go for a day and go through a lot of the nuances of this. But, but these are the, really the key components. We wanted to open it up for discussion, and we are looking to extend this. We think that it is in the county's best interest. It is a, we, we understand that it is a fairly subsides, or substantial investment, but we think that it is in the county's best interest to extend the agreement.
Okay. Debbie?
Stan, first of all, I think what you put out here is very informative. I've been through this a number of times, and you're kind of damned if you do and damned if you don't.
Yes, you are.
And so, staying within an agreement is, in the long run, an affordable way to go.
That is our perspective.
So, one of the things I see here is when you talk about the users, and I'm talking about county employees, then I, it looks as most, every county employee has access to a computer or needs a computer for their daily work life. So, does this user agreement allow some of the outlying services of the county to be able to utilize? For instance, as an example, LAFCO. They're an extension through a JPA. Do they have ability to piggyback on this particular agreement, or is just it the core county services?
That's a great question. I, I would need to look into that a little bit more. I believe that, and you're talking in terms of the, of the rights for, for home use, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, like LAFCO, you know, they're kind of an independent, but yet the county is connected in many ways through LAFCO.
Right.
So, their use is on the computer, so would they be able to piggyback?
I believe that those extensions in terms of, for the, for the home use purchase, if that's where we're going.
Okay.
And I will have to look into that to find out.
Okay.
But I think the answer is that yes, that they, that they would have the ability to do that. I need to, to research and find out. Very good question also in terms of if you take a look at some of those outlying areas and, and what's the impact with the enterprise agreement as, as, as far as being part of the county enterprise. Every year, we are required to either attest to the number of licenses that we've got.
Right.
Or at times, Microsoft will... or at times Microsoft will say, well, that's wonderful that you're testing this, but what we really want to see from Microsoft, we want to do an audit. And so, we give them the rights to, they give us software to load. We run a program under their guidance that pulls information from the network so that they get a very clear understanding of how many computers do we have that in the past 90 days or longer have been on our network? What's the address of the IP address of those computers? What software is loaded on? They get a very clear understanding of where these computers are and who's doing what with the network. From Microsoft's standpoint, it really doesn't matter where that computer sits. If it is doing business on the county network, then we have to have the licenses and it is part of the overall agreement. Couple of little numbers for you. They found 500 computers, whether it was laptops or PCs, that in, within 90 days had been on the network. And then they take a look also at the number of individual users who are looking at, who are using one or more devices. They give us a count for that as well. Now, again, if it's on the network, they don't really care if it's a W-2 county employee or not.
Okay.
I have a question as far as this goes for these devices here. Would that allow us to have Word on them? Uh, Word, it's not, it's not Word.
It's not Word. It's there, what you would be running on your pad is a Word light.
Right, yeah.
But it doesn't come into play here.
It's not part of this?
No. However, I'm going to take advantage of your great question. You have the ability to use your devices there to read county email. You could also read your county email from a laptop, from a PC. You could use web mail and do it from your, from a home computer. One of the areas where we're switching is when we have license rights from a device to go read your county email. We can either do that for you as an individual or we can do it for each device that is used. Microsoft, as we all have, they have seen a large growth in the number of devices that individuals use to access their email. So, we are looking at purchasing rights by user to go look at your email versus by device. Microsoft has told us, industry experts have told us, that you can use a rule of thumb of approximately four devices for each individual. That's probably high for the County of Calaveras, but it's much more than a one-to-one.
So, that there is a document like?
Not, well, there is, there is software that we can put on your device that will look very similar to Word, but it's not a Microsoft, it's not Word.
It's not part of this?
Right, it is not part of this.
That's pretty accurate, actually. High access from five different.
Right. So, when we get you, when we get a user license that's for you, we don't care how many there are. Yes, sir?
Chairman, I have a comment.
I have a, a pretty small sort of question. Why, Matt, in 2014 were we even considering changing? Was there a new program in place or something?
Another fine question. Part of it is budget. Budgets are tight, looking for ways that we can cut back. We felt at that time that, and other counties struggle with this same question. We said, you know, we're not planning on doing an upgrade on a couple, on these key components in the next year or two. Let's sit out for a year and buy back in. When we look into it, Microsoft said, we are there for you. We are happy to help you in any way that makes sense for the county. By the way, here's what that's going to cost you. And it was, it was pretty staggering to see that an agreement that for the components that we were talking about initially would have been $260,000 for three years. We've made some changes, it's up a little bit as you've seen, but that $260,000 would have been $488,000 because they said, guess what? We are going to invite you to repurchase every one of those licenses.
And Supervisor Olivera, in fairness to Stan, he was not here during that budget preparation, and there had been some discussion about dropping the enterprise agreement, but there hadn't been a really thorough analysis of what that meant. And we had no idea that it was going to end up costing us. And it was through Stan's effort going through and doing this analysis that we were determined that it will in fact cost so much more to sit out a year and then try and get back there.
And by the way, there are, as I've spoken to Shirley about, Microsoft licensing has sprung up little cottage industries with doing, with educating people where you can go away to two and three-day classes that are really teaching you the nuances of licenses and enterprise agreements. There's a few complications with it.
Isn't it also true that since then and now, between then and now, there's some of the software is not supported by Microsoft anymore? If we get kind of stuck in that deal?
If we get stuck in that, and that absolutely, absolutely can happen, yes. Yes. And so, this agreement catches us up with some of those areas, yes.
Question number two. The home upgrade program for employees.
Yes, sir.
Do you understand that you could upgrade your home computer as an employee, say Windows 8 or 7, 7 or 7?
Well, not so much the Windows operating system, 7 or 8, but the Office version.
The Office version.
So, there is, there is a, there's a wonderful program that I believe that perhaps a flip that you've taken advantage of, that where as a county employee for $10, you can get a current version of the Office suite for home.
Full Office suite?
The entire Office suite.
That's $495.
Yes, that's right. And that is, it really is to cover the cost of mailing, mailing the disc to you. It is, it is the rights as long as the county continues with the enterprise agreement. That in itself is a perk. It's not a reason to sign up again, but it is a nice perk for the county employees to be able to do that.
Last question. How many licenses do we have?
We've got 500, right now, we've got 523 was the number of licenses that we had purchased for Office, for example, Office and Windows. 523 licenses, it's part of the enterprise agreement that were in the last agreement five years ago. Forty-seven of those licenses were purchased on behalf of the county courts, or of the state court, rather. So, those 47 licenses went away. So, then we were left with 470-some licenses that were left. Because this recent audit had come up with 500 devices, we have to get back up to that. So, we've gone 523, 476. We've got to buy back to get to that 500 level. And then on an ongoing basis, when we purchase new computers, we will ask each department, is this a replacement? If it is, we keep track of that and we switch the licenses. If it's new, then we recognize that at the end of each year, we will have to throw up, we will go through this audit process again and we'll say, okay, we've gone now from 500 computers to 520 computers. We have to purchase those additional 20 licenses.
But is the RIS program, this charity department, including that licensing?
Yes.
As a mobile units?
No, no, not in the, um, we looked at this, didn't we, Dean? Yes. And so, for the software, it is included because they were within the last 90 days.
Okay.
Yes.
One question. You mentioned about the training.
Yes.
Is that specifically for IT staff then to keep updated on?
It's for the, um, thank you. We've got, we've got two components on the training. One is really technical training that are for classes that the IT folks would be more inclined to be taking than others. However, then there are other classes that are opened up to anyone in the county and we have somewhat of a limitation on them, but it's not much of a limitation. It's one per Office license, if you will. A great set of classes on the, for example, on all of the Office suite. So, if we say, boy, there's some things here for beginning Excel, advanced, Microsoft, PowerPoint, Word, that some of our people have taken advantage of. Quite frankly, we could do a better job of marketing those classes than we have done in the past so that those are open and there's no additional charge for those.
So, if I?
It's Microsoft trainers, so they're video courses.
Okay.
Okay, that was my question. So, if I wanted to learn more about Excel, because it would benefit me in my job?
Yep.
There would be a class, either like a webinar or somebody maybe comes out and teaches a class to 10 people?
It's video training, it's webinar.
Video, okay.
Yes. And then there's typically at least a beginning and an advanced, perhaps even a beginning, intermediate, advanced.
And there's no charge?
That is correct.
No additional charge? So, that's included in this?
That is correct.
$95. That's a great benefit.
We could actually offer that to the public and?
No, that's for county employees.
Just for county employees?
Yes.
Is that training held at our facility or?
Any, no, it's, you sign up, you sign up for it with your computer and then anytime?
Webinar program.
Comes to you. All right, any other questions here? Any public comments? Thank you, Stan.
That was a good presentation. I learned a lot. And I have a question. This is a substantial amount of money. What are other counties doing that are our size? It seemed like you could have a cookie cutter program that all the counties could have, you know, their own program. I don't know if that's true or not, but it seems to make sense. And also, has there been contact with a computer expert, a consultant, who also would be consultants to other counties about what's the most economical way to get the best computer services? So, there's just basically two questions and thank you.
Thanks, Al.
I think the experts are to the right of him.
Yeah, right. We have a couple of experts over there, Al.
You'll get a county disc, speaking.
Any other public comments on this? Okay, Stan, now to bring it back to the board. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Supervisor Wright, seconded by Supervisor Olivera to approve the attached quote for Microsoft enterprise agreement between the County of Calaveras and Microsoft Corporation in the amount of $287,558.85 for a three-year period from January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2017, and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement and approve the attached budget adjustment in the amount of $95,853 for fiscal year 2014 and 15 by a four-fifths vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? It's five to zero. All right. So, we're on our last item, Board Member Announcements. So, in compliance with AB 1234, chaptered as Government Code, Section 53232.3D, this is the time for board members to report on meetings attended on behalf of the county and to carry out their duties as county supervisor. And who would I go first?
I'll go first.
There you go.
Okay, I attended an exploratory meeting put on by Bob Dean by the Hoekstra at the library to look at forming an RCD in Calaveras County. That was an interesting meeting. I attended the first hour of it, then I ran across over here to the meeting regarding the Calaveras Bridge. That was held in this room the same evening. The Calaveras Bridge meeting was well-attended. There's a lot of citizens very concerned about what's going to happen to the bridge, kind of one of the cornerstone of the Quibbo community, so that will be an ongoing issue for quite some time. Also attended a little jobs training agency meeting yesterday over in Sonora. I've been having general plan discussions throughout my district. Now that the draft plan is out, there's a lot of concern out there that all the community plans that were approved by the communities and actually endorsed by the Planning Commission were not in the draft general plan, so that now the community is having to go back through and basically try to put everything back into the general plan that was in the community plans that everybody agreed on. So, still a big problem from my standpoint and from most of my community, why we threw those community plans out there in the beginning. So, that's an ongoing discussion that will be going, taking up a lot of my time in the coming months. Coming up, we have a fishing game meeting, first one, the Fishing Game Commission that I'll be attending as supervisor tomorrow night, so I'm looking forward to that. One of the things that I was excited to see on the, kind of the notes in there, that they're talking about doing workshops, having guest speakers as part of that. So, I think that'd be a really good way to get more attention to that commission is to have informative discussions about different fishing game issues addressing here in Calaveras as well as the state and nation. So, that'll be, I'll be there. I'm looking forward to that.
That's it.
Okay. I have sent off all my Form 700s, but I haven't been to any meetings yet, but a COG meeting is coming up and I am the representative on that with another supervisor, that's I believe Debbie Ponte, Supervisor Ponte. So, I will be at that soon. I've been working on a program for actually some time before I was elected and had a meeting with Principal Mike Merrill and also Terry Tanner at the high school. And I'm asking for the board's blessing going forward here. It is a program for, to create a student internship program which would involve young people in the government process. It truly is how I got my start with this many, many years ago when I was a student at UC Davis. I envisioned this probably starting with seniors in high school. It would be with departments that would be appropriate for it. Obviously, a department that deals heavily in protected information, that wouldn't be appropriate to put a student in there and we wouldn't want to do that anyway. And it would also be a valuable type experience, get them involved in the government process. I don't envision this as you're getting a student to come after school and do your clerical work. In fact, if you've got that already set up in an office, you probably don't want them to do that. But I could see them research, doing research on something when I really affectionately refer to one of my favorite things that I did when I was a student. I had somebody ask about polio vaccine and here I was, this young guy, and I actually got to talk to Dr. Jonas Salk. I thought that was a really big deal that he'd take the time to do that. And so, I kind of, this is a good way to get students ingrained in our society, in my opinion. And also, like many people here, I've got three children who all went elsewhere in the country and let them know that there is a future here also and train them to stay here. So, the first thing I would ask is to make sure the board has an interest in me doing this. And then what I will do is I'll start to contact the departments, including legal, and I probably will start with you. And personnel, and then try to identify departments that would be appropriate for departments that would be appropriate for, for students to go to. And when I've got a basic setup, I'll go back and talk with Mike Merrill and Principal Merrill at the high school, and he will take his project, he will take his presentation to their board, because obviously we have to have a strong partner there, otherwise it doesn't go on. And if we get it to where we've got it refined a little bit, then we take it to Brad Hard if they want to do it, and actually create a county program. So if I, you know, general feeling to proceed, so we, we can't move on it as an act, but we can take a poll.
Yeah.
So I am, and?
Interested.
Very interested in that, and I would like to see the results of it.
Okay.
I'm interested.
Sure, sounds good to me.
Okay, then what, what I will do is tomorrow I'm attending a, I don't know if it's called a workshop, or it's a presentation in stock that, that is connected with Better Business or the, not the Better Business, no, there, a business association down there that is involved in student internships, which actually include the state senators and state assembly down there. So I'm going to go down there and fill my head full of info, and I'll probably ask to grab 30 minutes or so of your time here real quick coming up, and then after that I'll go to departments, and when I, when I understand what I need to pitch first, when I can get two or three departments that, you know, including the supervisors, and tell them what will, you know, be an appropriate stance, I'll come back and, and let you know. And I thank you for giving me the thumbs up on that. District 5 is very uncommercial, and it's, that's no secret, so I'm not the town prior on the top of the hill saying that. One of the things I do want to do is do my best to stay in touch with the people, but there really isn't a lot of office space, and lo and behold, there really isn't one here for me either, so. I found that the Ranch Calaveras Property Owners Association Clubhouse is open from noon to four, so every Thursday I will try to be there from 1 to 3. It's not a political forum, it's just I'll bring my work, nobody wants to talk to me, they don't have to. Somebody wants to come in and say, hey Steve, what do you know about this? I'll be glad to, to speak with them. I'll probably be there earlier, and I'll probably be there later, but I want to respect their space also and not take advantage of their generosity for opening their doors. And the one other thing that I want to tell you is, is this is my second meeting, and I love when somebody stands up and says, we're the new supervisors, and it's sort of like you're the, the new kid on the block, which basically we are. But with, I grimace when I see these large expenditures, I'm like, oh gosh, you know, I'm, I'm going to give a yay vote to a, to something, you know, like the last one we did, which involves thousands and thousands of dollars. And I'm assuming a lot of things that maybe I shouldn't assume sometimes, but do, and I do believe that the, the, a lot of the effort was put into the presentations, and when we voted on them, I believe that it was the correct thing to do. But there are a lot of things on Public Works plate that kind of pop out of nowhere, and I don't, I'm not really aware of them, and I get, since our last meeting, I've been asked about three Public Works projects. And I, you know, Robert Packard is very accommodating about talking with me, but I'm wondering if maybe to catch all of us up, and maybe even the public, in the next couple of months or so, Public Works doesn't bring a presentation back that says what is on the books? Because it, because these things really, lack of a better term, kind of bushwhack me sometimes when I'm up here, and, you know, there's another $75,000 in our budget, I know what it looked like, because I sat here through the last budget hearing, and I'm voting yes on this, and in the back of my mind, I'm going, you know, okay, I've just voted yes, and how am I going to pay for it? So if, if that's possible, to ask them to do that, and I certainly understand, give them a little bit of time, time for it. Boy, I'd sure appreciate it, and I think my, I think the citizens that keep talking to me would like that too. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Olivera?
Thank you, Chair. Started attending my committee meetings, found out that, very involved, very important, I really enjoyed going to. I started out attending my first meeting with the Sierra Central Economic Development District meeting, met Larry Coak, their director, had a chance to meet that board. Very impressed the way they run their operations, got some valuable information. Most importantly, apparently there's a $60,000 grant that's going to be applied for, and it looks like they're going to be getting, and that's going to provide it for facilities for jobs, opportunities, and education of existing businesses, promoting businesses, it's a three-phase thing. And I understand that about $19,000, that is kind of earmarked for Calaveras County, which is very, very important for our staff's businesses. And it's an ongoing program, so I'm glad to be a part of that committee. I did conduct interviews as reported in a closed session on Friday 16. Excuse me, I'll get my calendar up to date. Yesterday was a very exciting day, I attended the Mountain Job Training Committee meeting as an alternate, and Supervisor?
Motherland.
I'm sorry. Motherland Supervisor Wright was there. Once again, got to meet that board, tour their facilities. I found them very impressive, they've got their act together when it comes to job training and what they want to do. In the course of the meeting, I must commend Supervisor Wright for stepping up and advising everybody that we have those needs in Calaveras County. They are looking actually for a facility, office space to rent, to bring that over to our Calaveras County. And I, once again, I want to commend Supervisor Wright for the position she took, and I supported him solely in that, and I think it was a, a real shot in the arm for our county to say, okay, let's get this program on the road, we're going to work together towards it, and I was very impressed. I did attend the Sierra Child Support Agency Committee meeting, and it was our, one of our first meeting there, and they had had election of officers, things of that sort. And we discussed some issues before that board, some issues with contract levers, some issues with the operation of child, Sierra Child Support Agency. I finished off by attending last night the meeting at the Ebbets Pass, gee, what's that name? Ebbets Pass Byway, I'm sorry. And I had a chance to meet folks there, so my predecessor there was interestingly educated on what the Ebbets Pass Byways Committee does. I think that's a very worthwhile committee. I, I understand that their financing structure is not what some people perceive it to be. It's more of a public donation type thing, but I intend to be at present at their meeting. So I'll be attending EPOT meetings, which is Ebbets Pass Door, Property Owners Association as I've done in the past. But I did have the opportunity to come across a couple of programs that were brought up as Supervisor Courtney has. I've received several inquiries from our folks up in District 3 regarding some booming issues and things of that sort, and I'm very happy to say we're able to assist those folks with the cooperation of the Building Department and Peter Mauer, which I think is doing an outstanding job. We did have an issue that we're currently working on with code compliance emergence. Courtney did an excellent job, this is a very quick type thing, and got me educated real quick, we know where to go, so I think we're going to have a resolution to that very quick. More importantly, I was approached by the folks at Ebbets Pass Moose Lodge, they've entered into a program called Safe Surfing Foundation. And what this is, it's a computerized system that identifies children and seniors by, in a briefcase portable contained computer. You can obtain their identifying information, obtain their fingerprint electronically, and take a photograph. And what this system does, it actually produces that instant, not instantaneously, but produces on a CD that you give to the parents or to the responsible people for seniors. That information can be disseminated in the case of a lost child or a lost senior by the parents or the caring, the caring party for it, electronically to the sheriff's department or the other agencies involved in search, and you can have that information available while conducting that. Now, this program was designed by a sheriff in West Virginia, and it's a nationwide program, there's only two in California, one in Los Angeles and one at Ebbets Pass Moose Lodge. What they want to do is they're training up their people, and they want to join in, get into a joint effort at no cost to county, to provide this access to constituents, and they want to do it county-wide eventually. They've gone ahead and paid the, for this kit, I've seen it, I've seen the work, and I, I've already discussed this with law enforcement, and it's a very positive thing, so I probably will be bringing back sometime for formalized program once I talk to Ebbets Pass for training status. And I'll entertain the board to take a look at it and see what we can do with it, if that's okay.
Okay, how much time we have left?
We've had about four, three minutes of this play.
You want, you have more time than that?
Nope. Nope, I'll take three minutes. Um, I'm kind of, so we have a COG meeting next Wednesday, the 4th, here in this chamber. We have, which I'll be attending. 4H has asked me that they have a judging competition involving five of their regional counties with the youth, that'll be here in San Andreas, held on February 7th, they're looking for judges. So I'll ask Diane to send some information out, they need some judges to help with this particular competition. I'll be on the CCTV in March. My goal there is to talk about transit and the services available through transit and get more of the word out. I'm meeting with the grand jury this Thursday, and I do want to make an announcement with the planning meetings that are being held. We have a series of meetings that Planning Department has put out, January 28th, it's in San Andreas at the Town Hall, and on February 4th, Rancho Calaveras Clubhouse, February 9th, Moke Hill Community Hall, February 11th, West Point VFW Hall, on the 17th in Arnold, and I forget the location.
VFW Hall in Arnold?
No, I don't know, in West Point. I don't know where it is in Arnold. The 19th in February at Copperopolis Armory, and Valley Springs on January 23rd, and, excuse me, February 23rd, February 25th in Murphy's at the Masonic Lodge. And each of these sessions are being held from 5 to 8, and this is a great opportunity for the community to come and hear about the community plan, a Q and A session with planning staff. And we have various planning, the document is in the public libraries for public review, and you can also go online to the county website under the planning tab and review this document. So I encourage people to do so, this is your opportunity to be involved and gain input, and it's a 90-day review process which will be ending in March.
It's at the Ebbets Pass Fire Station in Arnold?
Ebbets Pass Fire Station.
And it's on a call at Murphy's. I do have a question. For those meetings should, we have a Brown Act issue, we supervise the tech safety.
If you're there just for purposes of listening, you should not be involved with deliberation or any discussions.
I wanted to clear that up.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, so how much time I have left?
And I, I would just, just clarify, I mean, there are different, different meetings in different supervisor districts, so typically the supervisor would, would attend the meeting in their district, so there isn't that issue, so.
So in the interest of time, I have nothing. Thank you. You'll catch up next week, right? That's how it is.
Public comments?
Public comments?
Nothing.
None? Okay, so that'll be ends our meeting today, thank you.
Thank you, folks.